Good evening, I'm calling this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, May tenth at five o'clock PM. And this is the meeting of the City Council and also acting as a successor agency to the redevelopment agency, Rialto Utility Authority, and the Rialto Housing Authority. City Council meeting for the city of Rialto. Madam City Clerk, I have a roll call.
Mayor Robertson.
Present.
Mayor Protem Scott.
Present.
Councilmember Trujillo.
Present.
Councilmember Carisellis.
Present.
Councilmember Perez.
Present.
City Attorney Eric Bell.
Present.
City Manager Marcus Fuller.
Here.
That's it, okay. All right, with that, I will ask if our city attorney would like to lead us into closed session.
I'd be happy to do that, Mayor. You have four items on your closed session this evening. The first is a conference with legal counsel with regard to one item of existing litigation. Your second item is a conference with legal counsel with regard to two items of, I'm sorry, three items of anticipated litigation. You have a conference with your labor negotiator, and finally, a public employee performance evaluation as your fourth item. It does not appear that there are any members of the public here who might have comments. Assuming the city clerk doesn't know of anybody else, that would mean you could recess into closed session.
Okay. Madam City Clerk, any public comments? No? All right, with that, I'll intitrate a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Moved, I think I heard by Rafael, Councilmember Trujillo, and seconded by Councilmember Perez. Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Regular City, meeting of Rialto City Council. And it is Tuesday, May tenth, at six fifty PM. We have a, an echo in our system. Hopefully, they can address that. So this is a city council meeting acting as successor agency to the redevelopment agency, Rialto Utility Authority, and the Rialto Housing Authority. Madam City Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Robertson.
Present.
Mayor Protem Scott.
Present.
Councilmember Perez.
Present.
Councilmember Trujillo.
Present.
Councilmember Carisellis.
Present.
City Treasurer Eric Correa.
Present.
City Attorney Eric Bell.
Present.
City Manager Marcus Fuller.
Here.
All right, thank you. And now, I'd ask if everybody could please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance, and then remain standing so that we can have Pastor Javier Reyes from Chapel, Calvary Chapel, Rialto, lead us in invocation. So please, have across your heart, ready to give.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and if you will remain standing, thank you. Our heads. Heavenly Father, we do thank you this day that you've given us this great privilege to come and ask of you, dear God, that you would grant us wisdom, Lord. We thank you for these dignitaries, Lord, that have been elected and appointed, Lord, by the people of Rialto to represent them, dear God. And I do pray, Lord Jesus, that, Lord, as the proceedings take place, this council meeting continues, I do pray that you would grant them wisdom, Lord, to make the decisions that need to be made, Lord, that they would do it without prejudice, dear God, that they would do it swiftly, Lord, that they would have the insight that is needed, Lord, as they not only discuss the calendar and ongoing changes of this great city, dear God, but I do pray, as they look at claims that are for the city, claims that are against the city, Lord, that they would do it in a just manner, dear God, as they address new and old business, dear God, we pray that it would be you that leads them, it would be you that grants them the insight, dear God. And again, we want to ask and pray for all these things in Jesus' name, and we all said? Amen.
Amen.
All right, well, we would now ask if our city attorney would report out on closed session.
I'd be happy to do that, Mayor. You had four items on your closed session agenda this evening. The first was a conference with special counsel on the case listed. You received a report, gave direction, there was no other reportable action on that item. Your second item was a conference with the city attorney on three items of anticipated litigation. You heard a briefing, and we had discussion, but there was no other reportable action on item two. With regard to item three, you had a conference with your labor negotiator, your city manager. You provided direction, but no reportable action is required on that item. And then finally, you had your public employee performance evaluation. That was completed, but there was no reportable action. Thank you. That concludes my report.
All right, thank you. Well, this evening, we have a number of presentations and proclamations, and I'm going to start with, I believe, with the introductions. The city manager would like to introduce some new employees that have come in on board.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem and Council. I'm pleased to introduce Jennifer Cantlay, a new administrative analyst in our Maintenance and Facilities Department. Jennifer, are you here?
Mm-hmm.
If you want to say a few words.
Yes. Hello, everyone. I am Jennifer, a new to this department, and while I live in a neighboring city, my sister lives here in Rialto, and my niece is growing up here, so I'm very excited to be a part of the team of the city, to help just make Rialto a great place for her to grow up and for everyone to live together.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
And I want to take the opportunity tonight to announce to the council and to the community and fellow staff that I'm very pleased to announce the promotion and selection of Catherine Stevens as the city's next finance director. You'll be hearing from her again tonight, but I did want to again ask her to come up and say hello to remind everyone who she is. So Catherine, thank you for your willingness and all the work you've done thus far with the time you've been here with us.
Hi, my name is Catherine Stevens. I'm the former deputy, excuse me, the former deputy director of finance, now the newly finance director, so I'm happy to be here and I'm happy to serve.
All right, thank you, congratulations.
Thank you.[945.68][945.68](APPLAUSE).
Okay, then I think is that conclude for your new employee introduction? And then for our next one is a certificate of recognition to a Rialto High School student, and that's going to be presented by Councilmember Andy Carizellis. I want to go in, I need to find out, I'm missing one.
Good afternoon, everyone. We have a very special student here today, and I'd like her to come up today, and her and her parents, if they're here. Jacqueline, please join me. So I'll start over here, Jackie. So Jackie Martinez, also known as Jackie, was born March first, two thousand and four. Since, she is a twelfth grade student who is blind. She attends Rialto High School and takes honor and AP classes. During the past four years, she has encountered many hardships due to her visual disability, but has never allowed that to hold her back. She encountered many setbacks from school due to her disability. Despite those setbacks, she has gone through, she has fought through, through them, worked hard, harder than her sighted peers, and maintained a three point oh and above GPA. Jackie's parents have made sure that their daughter has lived a life as normal as possible by having her involved in many community events and programs with individuals who are also blind. She is very adventurous, she's a very adventurous young lady who loves reading and is very proficient in technology. Jackie has been accepted to Cal State Los Angeles and Cal State San Bernardino. Big round of applause.[1069.33][1069.33](APPLAUSE). So today, we will be presenting this to her, and it says, "From the City Council, in recognition of your outstanding academic achievements and the positive example you have displayed through your dedication and excellence in education, the city of Rialto congratulates you for your perseverance, tenaciousness, and unwillingness spirit towards reaching your goals. You are a role model whose inevitable footprints, footsteps are some to follow for all future generations." Congratulations, Jackie.
Thank you.[1110.14][1110.14](APPLAUSE).
And would you like to say a few words? I'll set this back, here you go. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you.
Thank you, great. Well, congratulations, and congratulations to the family. Thank you so much. I have two daughters that are in high school, and if I'm not on top of them making sure that they're doing their homework, it's very difficult that they complete all their stuff, so congratulations to you guys for your...
It is complicated.
Yes, it is very, but congratulations, and we look forward to your success.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great, that's wonderful, and looking forward definitely to your success and letting, keeping us posted on how things are going at Cal State LA or Cal State San Bernardino. Sounds like she has not made a choice yet. Not yet, okay. All right, the next presentation is going to be given by Councilmember Rafael Trujillo to the family. This is in memoriam for Dr. Loujina Horton.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, fellow council members in the community. I'd like to have Lavelle Horton come up, Linda Goffney and Velma, I'd like to come up. You know, I, we put together a in memoriam, a recognition of Dr. Loujina M. Horton, and so I'm just going to read off the resolution before I turn over. Basically, Dr. Horton has been a really important part of our community, and it's a big loss to our city, it's a big loss to the community at Julia Palms Senior Apartments, and wanted to make sure that we recognize her life in this memoriam. And so I'll read, "Dr. Loujina Horton had a passion and dedication to improve the lives of as many people as she could. She's a longtime volunteer with the Rialto Brothers and Sisters in Action, helping spread the word about the impact of HIV/AIDS throughout the Black and African-American communities. She's an author, lecturer, aging and mental health specialist, and worked tirelessly to assist those in need. She's armed with the wealth of knowledge as she went around the communities, educating individuals and providing awareness and sensitive care. Dr. Loujina Horton created the Senior Health Empowerment Services. She's focusing on the needs of seniors and the challenges they face. She was always there to assist the members of Julia Palms Senior Apartments where she lived, ensuring that their voices were heard and their needs were addressed. She blessed everyone with her skills, enthusiasm, empathy, and expressed love for her community. In memory of a lifetime full of special moments and memories shared with her friends, family, and those who had the opportunity to know her, your legacy will live on in the many lives you have touched." And it's signed by our mayor, Deborah Robertson, our Mayor Protem Ed Scott, myself, Rafael Trujillo, Andy Carizellis, and Carla Perez, the council members. So I wanted to present this to her sister, Lavelle Horton.[1315.64][1315.64](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. This is a great honor, and I'm sure my sister would appreciate. And I know that she's looking down right now saying, "Thank you very much." Ah, nice picture.
I wanted also to bring up Linda Goffney, she's very active in the Julia Palms Senior Apartments, and got to spend a lot of time with her there.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. The plaque kind of said it all, Dr. Harden, she was very instrumental at Julia Palms. She taught some of the residents how to read, and when it came to the election, she would get some of them, and they would go through the voter's paper, and she would help them. And like he said, she had implemented a program called SHEES, and that was senior health education. And Dr. Harden, she was big on education and helping the peoples in the community, and like the plaque read, she's going to be greatly missed, and she was just a blessing to us at Julia Palms. I know Rafael was the cause of us getting in the political arena, we phone bank, and we just did everything that we could do, she could do, and even when things was kind of up in the air, Dr. Harden would get on her scooter, and she would go through the apartment policing to see who was doing what. And we just thank Rialto, Madam Mayor, the council members, that you all thought enough of Dr. Harden to recognize her. Thank you.[1458.11][1458.11](APPLAUSE).
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, and I would just like to say to her sister, Ms. Horton, as well, and to the rest of the members who knew Dr. Horton, she actually was active up to the very event. A month ago, I think, it was first part of April, I saw her Wednesday at Farmer's Market in, on the scooter, and she came up to let me know that there was an issue, there was a concern about seniors over at Julia Palms. And she was working with Fernando, who is our newest gentleman with Advent Guard, and she was bringing people's information over from Julia Palms to help them with getting the assistance they could get on the money that was available for, through the CARES Act, any mortgage or utility assistance. So I don't know if the plaque and the comments really say all that she was doing, but I was just surprised. She rolled up to me, I was surprised that she was back up, she was on her scooter, and she was doing what she normally would do even before she had her heart condition, and she was bedridden for a while. Here she was, back up advocating for the seniors over at Julia Palms. And she also wanted to make me aware that she'd been there for seventeen years, and so she was on everything on it, but she also wanted to make me aware that she would like to move, and she was looking forward and hopeful that she was going to be able to get a spot at our new space facilities that will be built at what we're calling Metro South. And I told her I didn't think they were quite ready for a waiting list, but I would definitely call the developer and tell him that there were some people who were already, who should be really given some consideration. So I was shocked, to say the least, when we received the request from Councilmember Trujillo, making the request for her for, to have a recognition. I had no idea that she had passed, and all I can say is, I hope it was quick, and she went exactly the way she'd want to go. She was moving, she wasn't, she wasn't back in the hospital, and I don't know what the situation was, but I hope and pray that's exactly the way she went, because she was moving. When she could get up, she got up, and she kept people going. So she will be truly, truly missed, and she won't be forgotten, not by me, so thank you. And now, we have another presentation, and then we have, I have two presentations, so I'm going to ask my esteemed colleague if he'd get up out of his seat, being that he's a father. I know, was, and continues to be, and if he would be so kind as to present that to, I believe, Ryan could not be here, but I think Gerald, Gerald?
Jerry.
Jerry is here to receive that, and so I'm going to ask Mayor Protem Ed Scott if he will present, and then I'm going to, I got to go find out where the other one was.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You could have got the printing a little bigger on this, though. This is proclamation number nine, series two thousand and twenty-two. Whereas San Bernardino fatherhood's mission is to eliminate fatherlessness in San Bernardino by promoting a culture of father inclusion and responsible fatherhood in our communities, this mission will be accomplished in collaboration with local schools, community partners, faith-based organizations, and public and private agencies. Whereas research shows that when fathers are actively engaged and involved, children learn more, perform better in school, and exhibit healthier social behaviors. Also, children are less vulnerable to the risks of childhood poverty, mental illness, juvenile delinquency, youth sexual activity, teenage pregnancy, substance abuse, and failure to complete high school. And whereas, father involvement in the lives of their children increases the likelihood of children succeeding in their adult careers, employment goals, and involving parenting skills for their future families. And whereas, San Bernardino fatherhood is committed to providing education, resources, and advocacy that will build a culture of responsible fatherhood for the well-being of children, families, and community through the acts of involved responsibility and committed fathers. And whereas, when fathers have good parenting... And whereas, when fathers have good parenting and relationship skills and are engaged in a sustainable workforce with a livable wage, fathers are vital to ensuring the overall well-being of children, healthy or families, and safer communities. Whereas, the City of Rialto commends the San Bernardino Fatherhood for its work and contributions in promoting a culture of father inclusion and responsible fatherhood. And now therefore, Deborah Robertson, Mayor of the City of Rialto, along with the Rialto City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of June twenty-second as Fatherhood Awareness Month to raise awareness to the residents and businesses of the City of Rialto about the importance of fatherhood and a father's engagement with his children and family. It's signed by Mayor Robertson and attested to by City Clerk Barbara McGee. Thank you for all you do. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Uh, on behalf of San Bernardino Fatherhood, we would like to thank you, Madam Mayor, and City of Rialto for this. We really appreciate this and Ryan is very happy about this. So thank you.
Thank you. I, I do appreciate it.
Again, thank you very much.
Receiving it, being that June will be Men's Health Awareness Month, and I wanted to make sure that we acknowledged of fatherhood as well. That's a lot.
That was some little writing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, then we have, uh, another presentation before we have a presentation by one of our, uh, the vice president of the Board of Directors for the, uh, San Bernardino Valley Municipal Water District. And I would like to call up, and there was a bit of a, a mis-snafu because we thought the certificate of, of recognition for the Healthy Heritage Movement was going to be presented today, but actually, we will be presenting it on Sunday when we will be in attendance. So I will call up the Mrs. Phyllis Clark and Mr. Carl Dameron. And because I don't have the certificate ready, it will be there and I will present it on Sunday. I would love for you to come up and take the opportunity to speak to the fact that this month is, is Mental Health Month, Awareness Month, and the fact that you have launched this program. And the people should definitely come to, uh, list laughing for the health of it. So Ms. Clark, introduce yourself and then also share with us the opportunity to come to the event.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, council members, for allowing me this opportunity. My name is Phyllis Clark, and, um, I am the founder and CEO of the Healthy Heritage Movement, based in the IE, Riverside, San Bernardino. We're serving both communities. And we have, um, been, I guess, in, this is serving the community for about ten years. But we have a wonderful program coming up to, to honor and celebrate Mental Health Awareness Month, which is May. And the reason that we are putting this event on is because we have heard in the community, "Yes, I am suffering. I need help, but I don't know how to navigate the system. I don't know where to find therapists that may understand me," because you're interviewing them as they are interviewing you. So I decided I wanted to put together an event where, where we can get as many in the room as possible, therapists, behavioral health professionals, where the public, the community, can meet them on a fun kind of, um, celebratory type environment, so it's not intimidating. So on Sunday, we are going to put on an event at the Improv, at the Ontario Improv. It is a resource fair, a mental health, behavioral health resource fair. We have over twenty vendors there, exhibitors that are gonna tell you where they are, what services they offer for women, men, children, family, and so forth. And I'm really excited. We even have, um, was able to, uh, capture a resource from, uh, the behavioral, behavioral health department that goes out with the PD. So when someone's going through an episode, they're not always, you know, judged in a maybe a fatal way, and that's one of my concerns. So I'm really excited about having them to be a part. So it's going to be a wonderful resource fair. Everybody can come drink, be merry, eat. We have the full menu. We have beverages, mocktails, cocktails, and it is a, a four-hour event. The last two hours will be a, um, comedy show. And we call it sort, it's clean comedy, and the comedians that we hire have also gone through their own, their own struggles. Thank you. And Mayor's holding up the flyer. Thank you so much. Uh, and you're all invited. Tell, uh, everyone about it. Um, somehow, I, I will bring flyers back in. They're in the car. But thank you for the opportunity to, um, share it with you, cuz it's really important. We're now finally talking about mental health openly. So it is okay not to feel okay. You just need to know how to help yourself go through your PTSD, your anxiety, your, uh, abuse, your dis- your, um, substance abuse disorder, anything that you're going through. It's okay. You just have to get help. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Phyllis. Um, as I think I text when I concurred with Mayor Pro Tem, he had sent over the message to see if we could have a certificate of appreciation or recognition that, uh, May is Mental Health Month, but more importantly, uh, mental health has been something that has been very near to me, both personal and professionally. Before I came here, I was with the San Diego Mental Health Association on their board and very much focused on mental health issues, uh, all across. And sometimes, I will say, in, in our community, my community, and often communities of color, we have a hard time with letting someone know that we need help. It, it seems to be something that is a reflection on us not feeling like we are strong enough or feeling like we're good enough. There's so much that you deal with to begin with, and so a lot of things happen and, and we will not come forward until it becomes, it manifests itself into something physical and also sometimes even something violent. So, uh, I will be there and I've committed. I will be buying ten tickets cuz I think sometimes people need to look at mental health in a manner to say, "I'm okay and everybody else around me is crazy." Anyway, thank you. So now, this is another subject that is near and dear to me and I know to our mayor Pro Tem, and I'm certain to my colleagues. And when it's over with, I think everybody in this room will understand that truly, this is not a subject that we talk about where people say wine is for drinking and water is for fighting over. This is a case where we're all fishing from the same hole right now. And this situation about water drought and scarcity of water is very important. But I wanna say, uh, Vice President June Hayes, who also happens to be a resident of Rialto and our, one of our utility commissioners, she's gonna give us a little good news because here in San Bernardino County, uh, our wholesalers have made some wise decisions. And so it's not to say that we should all go out and turn on all our sprinklers, but I think you're gonna find this presentation very, very informative. So with that, Ms., I never know, so I'm gonna say, Vice President Hayes, please come up.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, citizens of Rialto, my name is June Hayes, and I think water is great. I am an elected official, your elected official, representing the people of Rialto and a little bit of Fontana up there in the, um, Sierra Lakes area, on a wholesaler. Now, what a wholesaler does is we bring water from Northern California down here so that we have enough water because you may have noticed it doesn't rain a lot around here. I have a presentation tonight on the money stuff related to, uh, to Valley District because a lot of people don't understand how we get our money from you and where, how we spend it. But before I start, if I may, I would like to announce, first of all, that you've probably all heard that there's a drought. And it, we would maintain in Valley District that this drought has been going on for twenty-two years. I'd also like to tell you that in the history of California, there have been at least two two-hundred-year droughts in our history. This is part of who we are in SoCal. But you know what? Don't waste water. Use what you need. Yes, you can have grass if you really want it, but don't overwater. Don't water your sidewalks. You pay me, my agency, the City of Rialto, Rialto Water Services, to take care of this. You don't need to worry about it. We've got it covered. So as long as you don't waste water, we'll be fine. And that's the good news I have for you tonight. But onto what I really wanted to talk about, uh, for this evening. And, okay, how do I get a PowerPoint up? Okay, good. There we go. Valley gets its money from several different resources. The big amount is related to the state water contract. I've often heard that we have loads of money and should be giving some back to the cities, the retailers, and to the people. Yes, there's a lot of money in this fund. It has been growing for many years. The purpose of this fund is to pay for the state water contract that consists of the infrastructure that brings water from Northern California south. It is like a mortgage on this infrastructure and will be paid off in two thousand thirty-five. In theory, this tax would go away at that time. But in reality, the tax will continue to fund repairs and upgrades of the system. This is a restricted fund, and the money cannot be used for anything other than the state water project. Were we to decide we no longer needed this money, it could only go back to the taxpayers, the property owners, who put money into this fund, not to the cities, not to the retailers. The money in this account will also fund the Delta Conveyance and the Site Reservoir projects. Unlike many other agencies, we hope to be able to cash fund most, if not all, of these projects from this fund and not have to pull bonds or get loans. This approach will save millions of dollars, millions of taxpayer dollars, over many years. The general fund is used to pay for our daily expenses, such as salaries, non-state water fund infrastructure projects, and non-state water fund projects to assist in the development of a reliable and sustainable water source for our districts, our district, its retailers, and the end users for the present and for generations to come. We know that climate change is here and that this area has a history of very long and severe periods of drought. Our goal is to mitigate against this for the good of the people and the environment in the district. Excuse me. This fund has been set up to reduce the costs of actual water use to the end users, that is, you and me. In a sense, it's like the base rate we pay on our other utilities in that its purpose is to support the infrastructure. It is a fixed rate based on the value of real estate, of your houses, if you're a property owner. We review this every year and adjust it upward and downward based on our best information about if we have adequate money in the fund. We have reduced this rate several times in the short period that I have been on the board. When RDA, the redevelopment agency, was stopped several years ago, there were winners and losers. Valley District was one of the winners. We received a lot of that money and will continue to receive that money as well as pass-through payments as former RDA agencies close out their accounts. Valley used Foresight to develop a nice reserve fund in the state water contract, but this RDA situation was a real windfall and helped a lot in the bottom line of the reserves in this account. And of course, with money comes the need to invest, and with investment comes earnings on the investment, and these earnings, of course, also help the bottom line. This is a chart that shows the ad valorem, or the amount of money that's placed on your property tax bills over the past several years. As you can see, we have lowered the rate, uh, three times since I've been on the board. I don't know what we'll do this year. We'll be doing that soon. And, uh, just to show you, you know, what we've been looking at. Our general fund reserves are obtained from a portion of the one percent tax. The county assesses a one percent general tax levy. You will see that on your ta- on your property tax bill every year. The auditor controller has prepared a chart, that you can see that little circle up there, uh, on the general tax levy allocation. The district receives approximately two point five percent of this one percent general levy tax. Um, for the year ending, the fiscal year ending June thirtieth of twenty-one, the district received eleven million dollars from the San Bernardino County General Fund property taxes. And finally, the, uh, general fund also receives RDA money. We obtain water from Northern California when it's available, and to the extent it's available, up to a hundred and two thousand six hundred acre feet per year. An acre foot is estimated to be approximately the amount of water a family of five would use in a year. We have never been able to get the entire hundred, two thousand six hundred acre feet. In the nineteen nineties, environmental concerns reduced the water availability further. This is one of the reasons we need the Delta Conveyance. And for those of you who are not familiar with what the Delta Conveyance is, it started part of the state water project. If you drive up Highway Five, you'll see that aqueduct. That's the state water project. That's the water coming from Northern California down here to make sure we have enough water. And the Delta Conveyance will improve that. Very complex. Not time for that tonight. How much further we actually, how much water we actually get each year varies with the amount of water available. Originally, our project water allocation for this year was zero percent, but then it rained in December, and so they upped it to fifteen percent of the amount we were supposed to get, but then they lowered it to five percent. It depends on how much it snows up there, on how quickly the snow melts, and on, on other factors related to water up north. The Delta Conveyance will not get us up to a hundred, two thousand six hundred acre feet, but it will stabilize us further. We have plans to work on other things to assure that the Valley area has a reliable, sustainable water supply well into the future. These, there are water banking, uh, ser- uh, things that we have where we store water from one year to the next for use in future years. By the way, we're dipping into some of that this year. One of these is called the Site Reservoir. That's not built yet. But the other one is in San Luis Reservoir, and that's where we will be getting some of our supplemental water from this year to make sure that you have enough water. Further, we have developed and are developing areas where we can hold water in our area for it to percolate or drip down into the groundwater basins. The Cactus Catch Basins in Northern Rialto are one of these basins. We are also working with San Bernardino Valley Conservation District to build an enhanced recharge area, another percolation, another drip down into- recharge area, another percolation, another drip-down into the groundwater basin, just downstream from Seven Oaks Dam. And we encourage retail agencies, that's Rialto Water Service, for example, or West Valley, in the development of projects to help with water supply, such as recharge, storm water capture, conservation and efficiency programs, and education. We also buy additional water when it's available and/or needed to store in our basins or elsewhere in order to make the best and highest use of the water that's available. The groundwater councils, you may have heard about, are part of this. There are two groundwater councils that we are part of. San Bern- we, Rialto, are part of. San Bernardino and Rialto, for the two basins that Rialto draws water from. We are a water wholesaler. We sell water to the retail agencies, to Rialto Water Services, to West Valley. Some of our local counterparts are hybrids, in that they are both wholesale agencies and part of the state water contract, but also serve as retailers that provide water to the end users. All of this makes it really difficult to do a simple rate comparison. So when you talk to people in Fontana or people in Riverside, and you ask them about their water rates, and you look at your water rates, they're not comparable. They're not comparable for a number of reasons. That doesn't mean we charge less and they charge more, or the other way around. It's just the way the bills are set up. We deliver water to the retailers. There are different, oops, that's the allocation. I'm sorry, I'm not keeping up to date on what I'm supposed to be doing. As you can see, that tiny little line over to the right, that's how much water we're getting this year. It ain't much. Okay. As stated at the beginning of this presentation, general fund money pays for our day-to-day costs, not directly related to the state water contract. It also helps pay for district projects, for operation and maintenance, repairs and upgrades of our infrastructure, and for projects geared to support water reliability and sustainability into the future. Your property tax bill, and if you can see that, that is a property tax bill there, can be found at the Auditor Controller's website. And I would encourage you to look there. It's a very interesting website to see what taxes come out of your property tax bill and things like that. And with that, I'm available to try to answer any questions you may have. Thank you for allowing me to present.
All right. Thank you, Vice President Hayes. I think the only thing I would ask you is to perhaps give a number, where if people have further questions, they could contact the office or contact you, but whatever you prefer.
Let me give you my number.
Okay.
Because, to tell you the truth, I don't know Valley. Well, wait a minute, I can look up Valley's number. And I will give you my number with the caveat that if you call me, leave a message, because if you don't, I'll block your number.
At least you're telling them upfront.
Okay. Valley District's phone number is (909) 387-9200.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Any other questions?
Thank you for the information. I don't know. I don't believe so. Thank you. So at least you now have, you're fully knowledgeable about the breakdown of the payment. Okay, well, that concludes our actual presentations, and now we will go into oral communications. And I believe this, Madam City Clerk, you have some people who would like to speak to oral communications.
Nancy Birch to the podium first. Nancy Birch.
I don't think anyone can hear you.
Nancy Birch.
Nancy Birch.
Birch. Yeah, you said it right.
Well, I was gonna run out. I wanted to check the name. I was gonna run out.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Nancy Birch. I am the Homeowners' President for Ramrod Senior Housing, Inc., in zip code Rialto. Really, it's, I mean, zip code San Bernardino, really in Rialto. As the Board is aware and the Council's aware, our mobile home park has 202 coaches. We are seniors, low to moderate income, 60 years old and older. We have two boards in our park. We have a governing board, which is our executive board, and we have an HOA, Homeowners' Association Board. I am the president of the homeowners. We do not govern the park. We handle the events, the committees, the volunteers. We are an advocate for the residents and a buffer between the residents and the executive board. I've been in contact with the mayor and the council regarding issues at the park, such as retaliation by the executive board, bullying, harassment. We've had threats of evictions, which are never going to happen. We have so much going on. The executive board is self-governed. Their bylaws allow them to pick and choose who they want on their board, change their bylaws at any time. We've gone to so many extents to try to have them removed or replaced. We don't get to vote them in or out. Some have been there for 20 years. They are practicing misappropriation of funds, which has been reported already to the Attorney General of California. We don't know what to do. The most recent one is the Solar Rights Act. We have homeowners who have chosen to exercise their right to solar power on their owned mobile homes. And now we've received eviction notices, that if we don't remove them, we will be evicted. No matter what we do, we don't seem to be able to get anywhere with it. And we are having a town hall meeting for the members this Thursday, the day after tomorrow. Actually, tonight is our HOA meeting. My vice president is running it. Aaron Brown let me know. He is the assistant, he is the deputy city manager, I believe.
Correct.
He will be attending our meeting on Thursday, this day after tomorrow. And we would invite any of you who can make it to come to hear the residents speak. We have residents who are not sleeping at night, excuse me. If it just affected me, it would be okay. I'm pretty strong. It's affecting residents who don't have that. They're fragile. They're trying to evict a 77-year-old woman with an 86-year-old husband that she takes care of, who's been there a long time, pays her rent every month, owns her mobile home, follows all the rules. Another resident who's in his 70s takes care of his brother who's mentally retarded, has been there for years, volunteers. These are residents who volunteered to do everything they can for the park. So I'm not fighting for me, I'm fighting for them, because they're voiceless. It seems like no one's listening. And so we're calling this town hall meeting on Thursday and hoping we can get some assistance, someone to listen and let them speak. And they're not sleeping at night. They're calling me at all hours afraid they're gonna be evicted, because they send these, the executive board sends out these notices of threatening notices, not kind notices that say, please pull your weeds, do you need help? It's like if your weeds aren't pulled in seven days, you're being evicted. And so that's just one example. There's so much. There's racism, racism, blatant, in-your-face discrimination. And I just don't know what else to do to help the residents and change this governing board back to the genesis of when Ramrod started. This is a different corporation, nonprofit corporation that took over in 1996, and they changed their bylaws, and they changed everything. Members don't, we don't get to vote them in or out. That's different than it used to be. Their taxes are fraudulent. I have proof of that. But I don't know where to go with this. So I'm hoping somebody can come and just be present, just to listen and to hear them. So it's not just me flapping my gums. You can really, you can really hear them. They're distraught. So that is Thursday, this Thursday, at 7:00, at Ramrod Senior Housing, 1010 Terrace Road, in the clubhouse. You can call me, or you can dial 200 at the gate if you can come and attend. And we're gonna give the residents a chance to speak and voice their grievances.
All right.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your time.
And I'm glad you did say, because it is a gated community, so how would people be able to come in?
Dial 200. And I will, Ms. McGee, I will get you that drive for Memorial Day this week.
All right. Thank you. I believe Mr. Fuller, I believe Mr. Aaron is gonna be able to attend. Okay, thank you. All right.
Next speaker we have is Jacqueline Valdez.
Jacqueline?
Hello.
Hello.
So as much as it still hurts that almost seven months ago, my brother was murdered by Rialto PD officers, Christopher Ivan Valdez, Michael Babinu, who was the one to open fire, and Joseph Aldama, who fell to intervene, which also makes him an accessory to murder, are still out roaming the streets of Rialto like if they didn't just murder someone. I am completely lost at words that just because Michael Babinu is a so-called officer, just because he carries a stupid badge, and that he can walk away again like if he didn't just murder someone. I'm gonna bring it up, the killing of Sergeant Gary W. Wolfley. How is Christopher's case any different? Because he carried a stupid badge? The man who killed him is still in jail and has served a total of 36 years in prison already, and yet just last week, the trial was trying to be reopened to move forward with the death penalty. How fucking ridiculous, the death penalty? How is it that Michael Babinu is still a police officer? How is it that he's not behind bars yet? How can the unfairness not be seen? Chief Mark Kling stated that till his day, this death continues to hurt their department. We lost my brother seven months ago, and trust me, it still hurts us. Nothing has been done yet. That man will serve life in prison for the murder, as Michael Babinu should. He is a murderer, and he does not need to be behind, and he needs to be behind bars, just as that man is gonna serve life in prison. The shooting is unjustified, and you all know it. Chief, what is taking you so long to fire this guy? Why haven't we done anything? You were brought back from retirement, right, to clean up Rialto PD? Seems as if you're just shoving everything else under the rug, and we're just continuing to get more and more cases. What are you waiting for? To continue to have more murders? To continue to have more families show up at your council meetings to talk about the death of their loved ones? How embarrassing. You all, the city council, those who are to be for the people, right? What the hell have you guys done? You guys know of this case for seven months now? You guys wanna continue to pay for officers who are murdering our residents? Michael Babinu makes $126,000 a year in total. How is it that we're continuing to pay for officers who are killing our residents? The Rialto Police Department is a damn joke, and until the entire department is put under investigation, including the chief, which is in the back corner, Rialto will keep murdering our children, our brothers, our sisters, and any of your family members. So like I've said it before, put yourselves in our position. Think about it if it was your son, your daughter, your brother, your sister, your mom, your dad, whoever. Think about what you would want to be done. He needs to be fired.
Have Ramon Ferreira open.
Ramon? My name is Ramon Ferreira, and I'm the uncle of Christopher Valdez, which, once again, was done by your police department. There's nothing that we can ask that you're gonna help us with. You did the same thing last time. You're just gonna stay here and watch us, stay mute, like you don't know what's going on. But I would like to ask one thing that I think you can help me with. Whenever there's a billboard or any type of thing painted on the wall that you don't agree with, who makes the call to have that billboard painted over? Do you guys know that? Nobody knows that? You know that? Nobody? Because my question is, someone decided to paint a billboard of my nephew, and the police department decided to have it painted over. I have a question. What does it mean when you cover the entire portrait but you leave his eye exposed? Just one eye. What does that mean? It means something. I mean, I know it's only a high school diploma to become a police officer, but at the end of the day, I think I'm smarter than that. So I know it means something. You know what it means? No, you guys? No? Can you guys help us? What does it mean? I don't get it. On top of killing my nephew, you guys still rub it in there. It's funny.
Okay, I don't even think we know what you're talking about, sir.
No, no, you do know what I'm talking about.
A billboard?
Yeah. There was a billboard of my nephew painted on the wall, and only one eye was left exposed. The city was sent there to paint it over. So my question is, who sent someone to paint it? And that painter who painted it, I mean, is he that good that he just missed that eye perfectly, or what? Or was he told to do that? It means something. And if you ask me, that's just a gang member hiding behind a badge. So no answers? Or who can we go to? Who do we go to?
I don't even know what billboard you're referring to.
It doesn't matter. I'm asking a question. Who do I go to to find out who sends to get those billboards painted over?
Okay, sir, this is communications. You're making, you're asking questions, and you're using, you know, you're welcome to speak, but it answers.
No answers, so nobody will tell us where to go.
We can explain.
So we're just gonna keep getting the same shit from you guys every time we come over here?
This is open communication, oral communication.
It's not open communication, 'cause nobody's communicating back.
Okay.
So what do we do? Where do we go?
If you have a question pertaining to that, then I would recommend that you put it in writing on a public record request, and then they will actually find out who went out or what department went out and copied or painted over whatever billboard you're speaking of.
Okay. Well, at least that's one answer.
All right.
It's better than what it's been.
Mary, maybe we can remind the audience that public comment is the time to have members of the audience address the council, not members in the audience, but the council, and to remind them that council can't respond to the questions. This isn't a question-and-answer session. It's just to, they can state their comment, it gets reflected in the record and on the video, and that's what this is for. This isn't a dialogue or a debate period at this point.
I understand that. But he did ask a question, if he wants to get direction as to where he could get that information, he does need to put in a public record request.
I'm not faulting your response, Mary.
Next one, please.
Debbie Ferreira.
Hello, I'm Debbie Ferreira. I'm also here to talk on behalf of Christopher Valdez. He was my cousin. And... it's very frustrating to not know what's going on, what's going on with Joseph Aldama, what's going on with Michael Babadox. He shot at two men that were unarmed. Why is he, why is he not behind bars yet? How is that okay? Is it, is that okay for a citizen to do it? I don't think so. If a citizen can't do it, why can't an officer do it, someone that's supposed to protect you? I don't understand that. Imagine, imagine having any of your guys' sons taken away from you by someone that's supposed to protect you. Imagine that. Maybe it'll make you hug your kids a little tighter today. 'Cause imagine losing your son unexpectedly, not even being able to say bye. Christopher called me thirty minutes before he passed away, and I didn't get to say bye. That's not fair. He was in the hospital for fourteen hours by himself before his mom showed up. That's not fair. I just don't understand. We demand justice. We're gonna get justice, and we're gonna keep being at every single council meeting, every single one. And we're gonna continue every protest, and you guys can keep fucking with us, and we're gonna do the same thing back. We're gonna, we're gonna be right in front every single time. You guys try to take down our flyers, paint over our murals. Keep going. You, all the cops over here literally do act like a gang. You guys back each other up, you guys right, you guys think you guys are right for killing people, give each other a slap on the back, a pat on the back. That's not okay. You took our peace away. You took mine and my family's peace away. We can't go through nothing with being happy. Birthdays aren't the same anymore. Holidays aren't the same anymore. It's always tears, and that's not fair. So we demand for Michael Babadox and Joseph Aldama to be behind bars, and we will not stop fighting, never, until it's done.
Mariela Valdez.
My name is Mariela Valades. I'm also here for Christopher Valades. I'm Christopher Valades' mother. Today, as a Hispanic family, we celebrate Mother's Day. How do I even celebrate without one of my children? You all know already that Michael Babanu's murdered my son. The Rialto Police Department is also responsible for the murder of my son. The chief, Mark King, is also responsible for the murder of my son. And he is sitting back in his chair as if nothing has happened. He was brought back from retirement to help clean up Rialto Police Department, and it does not seem that it has happened. All of this known, all of this is known, but let me share a bit about who my son was. The heart he had, the love he shared with so many people, and that he was not one to hurt anyone. Rialto Police took a piece of my heart. And whether I do whatever I try to do to be the person I was, I can't. So I know maybe my son to you guys was no one. But if it was one of your kids, would be someone you guys should get in my, my shoes, in my family's shoes, and think about it, and look at it, and do something about it, because we cannot have killer cops, neither in City of Rialto or any other city. They should pay for it, just like any, any person would pay for it. Every time a cop kills someone, they're always at no fault. And I don't think so. Just like there's good cops, there's bad cops. And you would see our faces every time. And I'm sure Michael Babanu's, he's never gonna have peace. Because when you kill someone, I don't think you can live with peace in your heart.
Next speaker we have is Joel Torres.
Hi, I'm Joel Torres. Wasn't really prepared to speak, but just wanted to say that Chris is well-loved, and I've been knowing Chris since forever. He's a homie, and just give his family justice, give them what they want, answer some questions, you know, though some, some can help. But, yeah, I love Chris and his family, and it hurts to see them have to come disturb your guys', whatever this is called. But, yeah, thank you.
I'm gonna try to pronounce the first name. Mackenclus Medina? What is it?
Mackenclus.
Okay, you have to speak, sir, and I'm sorry for mispronouncing your name.
Hello, I'm also here on behalf of the Valades family. And, you know, I've been a resident here for twenty-one years, you know, and I've never really faced anything like this before, but I'm a peacekeeper at, you know, rallies and demonstrations in Los Angeles, and, you know, we get families out there at these demonstrations for, for, you know, to combat against cop terrorism and brutality. And sometimes there's fifteen families at once. So we got fifteen mothers crying, you know, a whole bunch of cousins, a handful of family members, everyone out there. And all these testimonies take something from our hearts, you know, and now that I see it in my backyard, you know, I, I mean, I just have three, three points that you could bring a solution to this whole situation, and that's to hold the officers accountable for doing what they did, and bringing convictions to at least Michael Babano and his partner, okay? That's one. The second is reparations to this family, because this family has seven months without any answers, without any accountability being taken for the actions of those two individuals, 'cause they're not officers, they're individuals. So, and the third would be, you know, after the convictions, I'm sure everything will not follow in suit like Los Angeles. We will stop having tension. We will stop, you know, feuding with the police and the people, you know, 'cause right now, that's what this is doing. This case is gonna be big. We are blowing it up. We're blowing it up, and we will be right across that street every week, or every two weeks, whenever we can. And all I wanna do is ask for the City of Rialto to set an example, to set an example, and I, and I'm sure everyone in the Inland Empire will follow in suit if you guys convict those two officers. Thank you.
Victor?
Hello, I'm also here in support of the Valades family, and I am also here today as a concerned citizen of Rialto and question why the chief of police and the city council have not terminated and charged Michael Babanu's and his partner for the murder of Christopher Ivan Valades on October twenty-second. My concern is why the city and police department allowed and continue to employ and cover up the rogue police officer involved in a shooting of an unarmed black man one year and a half prior to the murder of Christopher Valades. My concern as a citizen of Rialto is to why this officer was back on the field, patrolling our streets without proper psychological assessment and retraining based on the released footage of the incident, but instead was given a badge of honor and a license to kill, being justified in the shootings of Lawrence Bender. My concern as a citizen of Rialto is why the day of October twenty-second, when Michael Babanu recklessly opened fire on a moving vehicle not in any immediate danger to him, nor the partner he cleared a few seconds prior, instead arrived on scene determined to kill and feel the adrenaline of pulling the trigger. Once more, why was this officer still employed by the Rialto Police Department? My concern and direct question is to everyone in this room to self-answer. If I throw a knife at someone's feet, and they look at it, or take a step forward, and I open fire, shooting that person three times in the head and two times in the body, in the same manner Christopher Ivan Valades was murdered, would you call this a justified shooting and self-defense? If your answer is no, then why, when the trigger-happy officer pulls on scene, determined to kill and clears his partner, takes a few steps back, opens fire, then backpedals to the left to make it seem as if he was in danger, is called justified? Wouldn't this be considered premeditated murder if you came with the intention to open fire? My concern as a Rialto citizen is who will be the next victim? Will it be myself? Will it be my brother, or will it be another Lawrence Bender? At what point will the city act, or will the chief of police hold accountable the actions of his officers? My concern and plea to the community is to stand up and join our fight for justice, because up until October twenty-second, Christopher Ivan Valades was a normal person like you and I. He woke up, took a shower, put on his work boots, and went to work, not knowing he would be killed by the very people employed by our city to protect us. I plead to the community to join our fight, because up until October twenty-second, Mariela Valades was a mother of four, who just now is experiencing Mother's Day without a son. What used to be a celebration with cake for Christopher's birthday, May twelfth, is now staring at a grave wondering why. So I come here to urge the city council to hold their officers accountable to a, to a higher standard they so-called claim to have, when they publicly blatantly wave, smile, laugh, and mock their victims' family members, because it could be yours, or the family, the family members of the few good officers next, sitting here asking for justice, because they, they too were killed on a traffic stop by someone much better than us, and the, and the FU stigma that the police department portrays. Thank you.
I'm not sure who's speaking. Is it Asta Monteiro, or is it Fernando? Monteiro. Who filled this one out?
Buenas tardes.
Good afternoon.
Mi nombre es Fernando Montezosa.
That's his name, Fernando?
Montezosa.
Montezosa.
Mis condolencias para la mamá y familia Valdez por lo de su hijo.
Giving condolences to the Valades family?
Y también para mi hermana Luz María Montezosa, madre de Óscar Santiago Montez.
Also for Maria, my sister.
Maria, Maria Luz.
Maria Luz Montezosa.
Que su hijo fue baleado también por la policía de Rialto.
That his son was killed also by Rialto police?
Vengo en representación de mi hermana Luz María Montezosa.
She comes, he comes here to represent his sister, Maria Sosa.
Y de Óscar Santiago Montez.
And Óscar Santiago Montez.
Y repito otra vez mis más sentidas condolencias para, por su hijo y para Luz María, mi hermana. Este ha sido un momento difícil para toda la familia, especialmente para mi hermana.
It's been very, very hard, especially for my sister.
Y quiero iniciar con estas palabras. El veintiocho de septiembre del dos mil veintiuno, lamentablemente, mi esposa falleció.
I wanna start with this on, the twenty-eighth of, the September of twenty twenty-one, my wife passed away.
Ella ingresó al hospital infectada de coronavirus.
She went into the hospital with coronavirus.
Y estuvo por dos meses hospitalizada.
She was hospitalized for two months.
Y las autoridades del hospital me permitieron estar por dos meses con ella durante las noches acompañándola.
And the personnel let me be there for two months at nighttime to be with her.
Ya que estuvo por dos meses en el hospital, ya. Disculpe. Menciono esto porque mi sobrino Óscar estuvo acompañándome, estuvo yendo conmigo durante esos días, este, yo lo estuve recogiendo.
I mentioned this because my nephew, Óscar, was with me those two months, helping me and being with me to be with my wife.
Yeah, lo estuve recogiendo, me estuvo apoyando él, estuve los fines de semana porque él trabajaba de noche.
I would pick him up. He was there to support me. I would pick him up, because he would work nights.
Lo recogía los sábados por la tarde y lo regresaba el lunes.
I would pick him up on Saturdays, and I would take him back on Mondays.
Todo este tiempo, mis sobrinos estuvo en apoyo conmigo. Y lamentablemente, mi esposa pues falleció el cinco de diciembre del dos mil veintiuno, y
My wife passed away on September fifth of twenty twenty-one.
Y el nueve, no, perdón, el tres de diciembre, ella estaba siendo cremada.
December third, she was being cremated.
Y seis días después, wow, mi sobrino me acompañó, quiso acompañarme a la cremación aunque él me esperó en el carro.
My nephew went with me for her cremation. He waited in the car.
Y lamentablemente, seis días después, nueve días después, perdón, eso fue el tres de diciembre, mi esposa fue cremada, y el nueve de diciembre, el nueve de enero, perdón.
Unfortunately, after that, ¿cuántos días después?
Seis días después.
Six days after.
Estaba siendo baleado.
Um, was it in ital?
Sí.
January the ninth?
Enero nueve.
Ninth. He was being shot.
Estaba siendo baleado por la policía de Rialto.
Shot and killed by Rialto PD.
Fue brutalmente asesinado.
He was brutally killed, murdered.
Y, este, ustedes van a ver el video, después lo vamos a poner. La policía llega, y después de tres, cuatro minutos, aunque ellos traían un oficial canino, decidieron no soltar al oficial canino, decidieron acribillarlo a tiros brutalmente.
Um, having a, I don't know what, how do you say it, but having other, other ways of, you know, getting to him. Um, I guess they had, que tenían, como se dice? Well, one of, a dog, a canine, yeah. Um, they had a canine there, you know, like he says, they could have let him go to get my nephew. But instead of that, they decided to shoot him and murder him.
Okay, um, what these family wants, I'm sure, same as me, you know? They want answers. Like you guys are not going to answer anything and we know that, we know because you guys let us know that already many times. But they just, they're here because they're going to fight. They're going to fight just like we are. They're, we're going to, we, we have to get together because it's not about Christopher or this gentleman. Óscar Santiago Montez. They are, they are already gone.
They're sitting here talking about that. They just murdered this guy's nephew and he's sitting there on his phone. On his phone.
Um, okay, excuse me. Um, they're already gone. They're already gone. Um, what my, our point here is
Can I get some order?
It's not about our, our families only.
Okay.
It's about all the community. It can be your grandson. It can be your son.
My son's dead.
It doesn't matter.
It does.
Oh, yeah? Well, I'm sorry, but was he taken by a police officer?
Okay, you know.
No, he was taken by
This is oral communication. I am going to
Killed him.
I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask if we can have some order or I'm going to have to ask if, please.
No, that's
Will you leave the facility? No, because this is oral communication. You did have your opportunity to speak.
I'm translating.
And you did translate and his time has ran out.
Okay, that's fine.
And so we have other
She was here for hours. She was here for more than an hour.
I know, can we
Oh, really? I mean, haven't been up here for an hour.
No, can we have somebody else speak? Is there other people?
Yes, you can. Then you should have told everybody the same. If you're going to give fifteen minutes to one person, give fifteen minutes to everybody.
Oh, no, that, that was a
We're all the same. All, all lives matter.
Excuse me. That was a formal presentation. Okay. Thank you.
We call the next speaker?
And could you let me know how many speakers we have?
Well, this is one.
This, this is the last one?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Cecilia Santiago.
Ms. Santiago.
Buenas, Cecilia. Mi nombre es Cecilia Santiago, hermana de Óscar Santiago Montez.
Her name is Cecilia Santiago Montez. She is the sister of Óscar Montez, who was murdered by Rialto PD.
Desafortunadamente, mi hermano lo mataron con diecisiete balazos.
Unfortunately, my brother was murdered with over seventeen bullets.
Me duele mi familia, me duele mi mamá, me duele que no esté pasando nada con la responsabilidad de estas personas que están matando el valor que es de la vida.
I'm hurting. My family is hurting. My mom's hurting. I'm sorry.
Me duele que estén matando el valor de la vida, es suspeciable.
She's super hurt at the fact that these officers are murdering these people.
Es insustentable. Es insustentable. Eh, fuimos a preguntar a la, a la estación de policía.
We went to Rialto Police Station.
Y nos pasaron, nosotros estábamos pensando que nos iban a dar información.
And we thought, we went there thinking they were going to give us information.
Lo único que hicieron fue interrogarnos.
All they did was interrogate us.
Y después decirnos que ellos no tenían ninguna información, que no nos podían dar absolutamente nada.
And after that, they went along saying that they weren't able to release any information to us.
Deberon darnos un reporte de la policía que fue escrito en televisión.
All they gave us was a report that was written by the Rialto Police Department that was put up on the internet.
Fue público, pero ni siquiera nos dijeron nada de eso.
All they gave us was the public information. They didn't give us anything else.
Ha pasado el tiempo y está pasando. Y si nosotros no ponemos un alto, ellos piensan que están actuando bien.
If we don't put a stop to this, they're going to continue that their actions continue to be okay.
Y no solamente es una familia. Acabo de ir a una protesta y son muchas familias.
We're not the only family. There's so many families. I just went to a protest of another family.
Mi hermano estaba en una crisis y debió ser ayudado.
My brother was having a mental crisis and he should have been helped.
Pero fue acribillado por varios policías con diecisiete balazos.
But he was shot multiple times by multiple officers, over seventeen times.
Y cuando nos avisaron que él estaba, que él había fallecido.
And when they let us know that he had passed away.
Después de tres días, nos empezaron a presionar que sacáramos el cuerpo porque le iban a mandar a una fosa común.
And they kept pressuring us three days later that we needed to take his body.
Porque le iban a mandar a una fosa común. Ah, donde nadie lo reclamaba.
If not, he was going to be sent to where the bodies aren't claimed.
No tengo información, no tengo nada. El reporte, el reporte
The report of the officers.
Dice que le dieron ayuda.
Says that they gave him help.
Pero ellos no le dieron ayuda. Le dispararon y después murió y solo lo esposaron.
All they did was shoot him. They didn't help him and he was exposed there at the scene.
Él estuvo todo, desde la una hasta las cuatro de la mañana del siguiente día, su cuerpo estuvo descubierto.
His body was uncovered the entire time from when the incident happened at one P M till four A M the next day. His body was uncovered.
No tengo respuesta de nada y quiero saber qué pasa con, qué pasa. Así van a matar a todas las personas? Así van a matar tu hijo y si es tu hijo mañana y si es el hijo de alguien aquí?
I don't understand. We need answers. Tomorrow, who will it be? Will it be your brother? Will it be your son? Whose kid will it be next?
Let's complete the oral communication forms.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And now we will move into the agenda items and determine if there's anything that needs to be removed or or abstained from. Is there any information or comments that anybody wants to, to note? Uh, was there something? Okay.
I can read that into the record if you'd like me to.
Yeah, I would also like to, I'm sorry, I didn't see if you had sent that to me.
That's quite all right. Yeah, I did, but it was, it was today. Uh, it's item B one, that's the first of the warrant resolutions, warrant resolution number forty-one. There's two vouchers, two-two-three-two-eight-two, two-two-three-two-eight-three. Both have to do with the National Council of Negro Women. There's a payment for three thousand five hundred ninety-six dollars and fifty-two cents and another payment for two thousand six hundred ninety-two dollars and twenty-two cents.
All right.
We'll indicate that you'll recuse from those.
I will recuse myself from those. Thank you. Anything else? If not.
With, with those notes, I'll move to approve the consent items.
Been moved by Councilmember Trejo.
I'll second.
And seconded by Councilmember Perez. Any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. So now we will move into our first order of business, which is a public hearing, tab number one, on the Rialto Landscaping and Lighting Maintenance District, number two. And I'll be sitting by Ms. Crowe.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Potem and members of the council. This evening, I am here to request city council conduct a public hearing regarding the proposed annexation of territory to the Rialto Landscape and Lighting District, number two. The city conditioned several development projects to construct Parkway under median landscaping and to install city streetlights. Annexation into L L M D two is a condition of the city's acceptance of any publicly maintained landscaping or street lighting. Staff is currently recommending the following development projects to be annexed into L L M D number two. The first is a non-residential annexation, P P D two thousand seventeen dash zero zero two nine, Woodland Pallets Corporation. Here is an aerial view of this P P D. And second, um, we have two residential annexations. The first one is P P D two thousand twenty-one dash zero zero one zero, Richmond American Homes. And second, track two zero zero nine two, A G Essential Housing. A protest ballot proceeding for the proposed levy of new assessments as described in the engineer's report. On April twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two, the city council adopted resolution number seven eight five seven, setting a public hearing to consider the annexation to the Rialto Landscape and Lighting District, number two, for this evening, May tenth, two thousand twenty-two. Subsequently, the city mailed public notices and official ballots to the property owners on record. At this time, I request that the city council conduct the public hearing and take testimony regarding the proposed annexations and tabulate the ballots received. Adopt the resolution declaring the results of the property owner protest ballot proceedings and adopt a resolution confirming the engineer's report regarding the annexation. Levy the annual assessments described therein and the assessment diagram connected therewith and ordering the levy and collection of assessments. I can answer any questions at this time.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. If there's anyone who is wishing to speak to the item. Hearing none, um, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
It's been moved by Councilmember Trejo. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
And seconded by Councilmember Perez. Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Does anyone have any questions or comments pertaining to the annexation? Is there something?
I have three ballots that I will open. For L M D two, P P D two thousand seventeen dash zero zero two nine. Uh, for Woodlands, Woodlands Land Pallet Corporation supports. Support, okay. Well, that's, um, for P P D, uh, two oh one seven dash two two zero nine, which is Woodland Pallet Corporation. The second ballot. Uh, track, uh, two zero zero nine two. For Richmond American Homes, uh, supports. And the final ballot, uh, P P D two thousand twenty-one dash zero zero one zero. And this is also in support. This would be Eccentra, A G Eccentra Homes. Those are the three ballots.
Okay.
Council, with that, there's been a successful vote for annexation of each one of the properties that staff presented into the district. That clears the way for you to ask any questions or to now vote on the item.
All right. Want to make, we need a motion.
I'm moved. So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Caris Ellis. Motion by Councilmember Trejo, second by Councilmember Caris Ellis. Okay. Do you need a roll call?
Um, no, Madam Mayor, you just want me to call?
No, okay.
Yes, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Trejo.
Aye.
Councilmember Caris Ellis.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Mayor Potem Scott.
Aye.
Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Okay.
And for the record, Madam Mayor, Mayor Potem, council, I'll let that, uh, the, the vote and the motion and the approval for resolution seven eight seven six and for resolution seven eight seven seven for the city council.
All right, thank you. Moving on to tab number two, and that is going to be presented by Ms. Alvarado, Community Service Director.
Uh, good evening, uh, Madam Mayor, Mayor Potem and members of the council. The item before you is to reopen the public hearing and solicit public comments from interested citizens regarding um, the staff's recommendation for substantial amendment number five revising the two thousand twenty-one annual action plan for C D B G C V activities. Um, Lizette from Avant Guard has prepared a PowerPoint presentation to take you through all of the information that's in the staff report and also answer any questions that you might have.
All right.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. Great to see everyone again.
Thank you.
As Cynthia described, uh, the item tonight is to request the city council, um, to conduct a public hearing and solicit public comments from interested citizens and adopt a resolution approving substantial amendment number five, uh, revising the budget to the two thousand twenty-one action plan. Based on some of the comments received at the last council meeting, we are taking this opportunity to provide the city council with an update on the Rialto assistance programs. Um, on October twelfth, two thousand twenty-one, the city council approved substantial amendment number four, which allocated approximately one point three million dollars to the following programs. Seven hundred and sixty thousand to the rental mortgage utility assistance program. Two hundred thousand to the small business storefront assistance program. Fifty-seven thousand one hundred and sixty-two dollars to the workforce development job creation program. A hundred thousand to COVID nineteen testing. Twenty-five thousand two hundred and sixty dollars to the personal protective equipment and hot meals for, uh, Rialto senior citizens. And a hundred and ninety-seven thousand one hundred and sixty-two dollars, uh, to swag for a total of one point three million dollars. As you are aware, Avant Guard was hired to administer the city's CDBG programs. Our contract was approved in August of 2021. September 2021 is when we first initiated the transition of the CDBG programs from the previous consultant. And actually, our first meeting here was to conduct an exit interview for a recently conducted HUD audit. On November 2021, AGI took over the administration of the CDBGCV programs. On December 14, 2021, the Rialto City Council appropriated approximately $3 million to be made available for residents who had been impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic and allocated the funding as follows. $1.5 million for rental mortgage utility assistance, $600,000 for the Small Business Assistance Program, $200,000 for burial reimbursement, $150,000 for childcare reimbursement, $400,000 for homeless services, and $150,000 in ambulance support services. After the item was approved by the city council, our staff worked on developing the program guidelines, the applications, and the outreach materials for the assistance program, and we began accepting applications on January 14, 2022. This table is also included in your staff report, where we're providing a summary of all the applications that have been received to date. As mentioned in the staff report, the city initiated the CDBGCV programs in June 2020. That's when the city first began accepting applications, and were implemented by in-house city staff. In November 2021, our staff took over the administration of the programs. So here provides a summary of how many applications were received by the city, how many were transferred over to our staff, where it says received AGI, how many we have approved, how many are currently in review, and how many have been denied slash closed. So we received a lot of applications that had been on the waitlist for some time. I believe we had applications dated May of 2021. So by the time our team started calling, we either were not able to get a response or applicants were not interested in the program, or we were able to move them over to the ARPA or to the Rialto Assistance Program. I see on your slide there, the business table was cut off, but it should be on your printed PowerPoint presentation. So for the Small Business CDBGCV Program, there were 19 applications that were received by the city. Oh, there it goes. Sorry, I'm not sure what was cutting it off. Six have been received by our staff. We've approved three, and three are currently in review. For the Rialto Assistance Program, we've had some good success in processing and receiving applications. We received a total of 208 applications for the Rental Assistance Program. We've approved 126. We currently have 44 that are in review. We have 38 that have been denied, and this has been due to the fact that they are either receiving assistance from other programs such as Section Eight, or they've already received programs from the state for the same months, so we can duplicate the benefits. But those applications have been closed. For the Small Business Program, we've received 52 applications. Thirty-four have been approved. Twelve are currently in review, and we have six applications that have been denied. And these are due to applicants not necessarily being within the census tract, but outside of the census tract and not meeting the revenue loss calculation that is required as part of the guidelines. Here's a typical process for how long it takes us to process applications. Our overall application process is approximately two to three weeks. While there are some exceptions, we have adjusted our process to ensure timeliness. Sometimes, applications do take longer to process, either because we're not getting a response from the applicant, or there's additional documents that are requested, so it takes additional time to process the applications. I want to reassure the city that our goal is to implement a program that is responsive to the needs of the residents and the businesses. We understand that any help that the city can provide is essential to the residents and businesses to pay for their past due bills and rent. To avoid human error as much as possible, we have initiated correspondence through the processing phase to maintain open communication. The new process will require that we contact the applicants a minimum of three times. So this includes, as the application is received, the applicant will get a notification stating their application has been received and it is being reviewed, and advise who is assigned to review their application. This will be done in the form of an email if we have an email address, or we will contact them by phone or correspondence. Once the application has been reviewed and approved, we will notify the applicant of their award amount and advise them that the application has been approved. Once the agreement has been drafted and has been sent for signature, because those are sent through DocuSign, we will make sure to also call the applicant and let them know that their agreement has been signed and is ready for execution. Once the agreements and the packages are completed, we will be sending them to the city staff, who is issuing the payments. We've generally scheduled on Tuesday to have those completed applications to the city so they can process the checks on a weekly basis. We also have staff here at City Hall now. Our staff is working Monday through Thursday from 9:00 to 1:00 p.m. And just in the past two weeks that we've been here, this is our second week that we're here, we've noticed a difference in the response with the applicants. I think having somebody here who can directly answer their questions regarding their application or if they need help filling out an application, we feel that it's really helped with the process. And so we're willing to continue providing that service to the city. For the CDBGCV applications, we have started calling applicants. We've actually gotten some good feedback based on the most recent funded applications, so we've made some adjustments to our recommendations, which I'll present to you in a later slide regarding the funding for that program. To continue promoting the program, excuse me, we plan on coordinating with the Community Services Department to participate in city events. For example, on May 18, we are coordinating to participate in the Rialto Job Fair with the Resource Center. We also plan to host a Business Assistant Workshop in the month of June. We will begin convincing businesses to invite them to attend, and we will have staff available there to complete applications. It's our hope that we'll have this workshop in the evening, and we'll have about five or six of our team members here helping businesses complete their applications. Last week, we coordinated with the Rialto Water Department, and we sent out a mailer to approximately 2,000 residents, which are currently past due on their utility bill. So we sent two mailers out, one to residents who are in the census tract, and the notice to them stated that they qualify for the program, and all they have to do is just come in and apply. And then the other mailer indicated that they may qualify for the program if they're outside of the census tract, and we will be able to help them with their applications as long as they submit the documentation needed. So now back to the substantial amendment. Thank you for your patience. There's a lot of information to go through tonight. Here's a summary of the original amounts that were programmed and how much has been expended to date. Would you like me to go through each one of?
I'm trying to find that page in my package here.
It's page?
I have it.
Okay, page nine of the presentation.
Yeah, no, I have.
Would you like me to go through each one of these items? Yeah, okay. So the city originally allocated $760,000 to the Rental Mortgage Utility Assistance Program, based on the applications that we have reviewed and have determined to be eligible, meaning that all of the documentation has been collected by HUD. We determined that $59,000 has been expended, which leaves a balance of $701,000. For the Small Business Storefront Assistance, the budget allocated was $200,000. The city spent $68,000, and there's a balance of $132,000. For the COVID-19 testing, the budget was $100,000. No funds have been reported and expended to date, so therefore, that balance of $100,000 remains. For the Workforce Development and Job Creation, the budget allocated was $57,162. $31,429 was expended, leaving a balance of $25,733. For the SWAG Program, $197,162 was allocated. All of the funds have been expended, so the balance is zero. For the Personal Protective Equipment and Hot Meals for Rialto Seniors, $25,260 was budgeted, $5,600 has been expended, leaving a balance of $19,571. Based on the feedback provided at the AdHoc Committee, which was held on March 21, 2022, we discussed these balances, and there was recommendations that were suggested by the AdHoc Committee, and those were noticed as part of our public hearing requirements for the CDBGCV Program. We also drafted the substantial amendment based on these recommendations that were previously noted from the AdHoc Committee. Since the publication of the hearing, we have made some revisions to our recommendations. So for the Rental Mortgage and Utilities Program, we're requesting that there be a revision to the budget of $200,000. Since we have been able to get ahold of additional residents and we are having them fill out the self-certification forms, we want to make sure that we leave funds allocated for that program so the city can be reimbursed. For the Small Business Storefront Assistance Program, based on the additional applications that have been received and they meet the criteria, we're recommending that the budget remain at the $200,000, and there's no change. For the COVID-19 testing, we are recommending that that funding is reallocated. No changes to the Workforce Development Program or the SWAG Program, as well as the Personal Protective Equipment and Hot Meals for Rialto Senior Citizens. We're just in the process of collecting the additional documentation needed for the use of this funding, so we feel that most of these funds will be expended by the required timeline. Our changes include allocating $100,000 to a Food and Security Program, $410,000 for park ADA improvements, and $150,000 for CDBGCV administration. I'm going to call Cynthia back up here so she can discuss the proposed park improvements.
In your staff report, it highlights six parks that are in need of ADA upgrades, and they've technically sat on a list for a few years. Based on the CDBG census tracts, only two of those six parks actually qualify or are eligible for the funding. Earlier this evening, you approved to sign, to have the city manager sign contracts with the State of California Parks and Recreation Department for some per capita funding that will be going towards these particular, these two particular park locations. So Andreessen will be getting per capita funds to upgrade the walking track itself, replace old exercise equipment, and replace lighting for the parking lot. And over at the Fitness Center, the per capita funds will be used to update some playground equipment that needs to be switched out, along with installing some roll-up doors. The CDBGCV funding for these two parks, after looking at the ADA recommendations that were put together some time ago, staff is recommending that the funding for parks for the CDBG amounts that you're looking at this evening go towards Andreessen Park so that we can have a finished park product and not just do a portion of it. So the CDBG funding would go to providing lighting around the walking track itself, replacing the current place structure and making it an inclusive playground, removing the woodchips, and providing some rubber surfacing, which will be more easily accessible to kids with disabilities, providing a shade structure over the playground itself and the exercise equipment. And all of these upgrades to that park will allow extended hours of use for patrons, which falls within the ADA accessibility requirements for CDBG improvements. So currently, at that particular park, because of our lighting situation, it can only be used from the time the sun is up to when the sun goes down. And so these lighting improvements will allow for a longer time span for families to be able to recreate in a safe environment and also be able to just expand the overall hours. The same thing with the shade structure. Obviously, during the summer months, we get a little hot, and sunburns are very much possible, but the shade structure will also expand the number of hours that patrons can be out at the parks, either exercising or playing on the playground. And I'll turn it back over to Lizette.
So for the funding, for the Food and Security Program, we're proposing to develop a program that will provide food assistance via grocery deliveries for pickup from a local grocer. And this would be, can be offered to seniors, low-income individuals. The city council can decide on the priority based on the requirements. Seniors is presumed qualified class under HUD requirements, so that would probably be the most efficient way to administer the program, because we won't need to collect any income documentation. If it is offered to all residents, they would need to meet the HUD low-income limits. I wanted to point out that since we're covering both programs in tonight's presentation, the guidelines that are developed for both of these programs are approved and set by the city council. So the city council has a discretion to make any changes as they feel meets the community needs. So for example, if for the Rialto Assistance Program, the city council wanted to increase the amount of assistance that is being provided for the Rental Mortgage Utility Assistance Program or the Small Business Program, as well as for the CDBGCV Program, those adjustments can be made at the request of the city council. In addition to some of the guidelines regarding business size, currently, the threshold that we have in the guidelines is for 25 employees or below. If that, the city council wishes to change those guidelines, that can also be addressed. So I just wanted to put that information out there. Since we're only three months into the program now, actually, no, I'm sorry, it's May, almost four months into the program.
I was going to say longer than that.
If we started in middle of January, there is the opportunity to make those adjustments to the program. there is the opportunity to make those adjustments to the program as the city council wishes. So as stated earlier, today is to conduct the public hearing and solicit public comments, and then adopt a resolution approving substantial amendment number five, revising the budget amounts to the 2021 Annual Action Plan for CDBG-CV. I'm available to answer any questions by the city council.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing, and I don't know if there was anyone who had expressed interest in speaking to this item. It's been moved by Mayor Protem Scott, seconded by Councilmember Tree Hill. Close the public hearing, no objections, the public hearing is closed. Now we have a couple of questions and comments. I don't know, Rafael had his light on first, so I, Councilmember Tree Hill, go ahead.
Thank you so much. I do have a question. I noticed that we allocated $150,000 for ambulatory services, but then it kind of, on your presentation, it just drops off and you don't really see it anywhere else. And I was asking that question because at the last council meeting, I asked why it wasn't on the website for someone to apply for ambulatory services assistance. So I, wondering how that kind of fits into your presentation. It kind of just, it kind of just appears and then disappears in your presentation. It's $150,000.
And I don't know if Chief, Acting Chief Park is in the room, but we're coordinating that because as you might remember, this was a program to help provide assistance to those that had an ambulance bill that wasn't covered by insurance related to a COVID call for service. And so we're coordinating the logistics of how to parcel that data out of the billing information and be able to outreach to some of those residents that aren't, you know, aren't aware that this assistance is available. So we're working with the fire chief on that coordination.
So wouldn't it be something you apply for, it'd be something that the outreach to you for the outstanding bills?
Yeah, we really need to make that connection ourselves because it's, you know, it's a limited database of people that would be able to qualify for that assistance.
Great. I had another question. I noticed that we added your administrative fees. I think verbally, we thought it'd be the annual CDBG that was going to be paying for your services, but when we actually started looking at the agreement, there was really nothing there. So is this kind of your fees to run these programs that we have in here?
As part of the CDBG-CV program, HUD allows the city to allocate 20% of the allocation for administration. And this is just, this is overall for the city, whether it be consultants or city staff, to administer these funds as a whole. When the city approved the budget, there was no administration dollars that were allocated as part of the budget. So we're adding it as a recommendation. Currently, our services are funded through CDBG, as well as the general fund for the Rialto Assistance Care Program. So this would just be another revenue source to pay for the administration of the CDBG-CV programs.
Great. Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
When you say pay for the administration of the CDBG program, are you talking about your payment, or does that include city staff?
The allocation will be set, and then it'll be up to the city to determine if they would be using the entire amount for us or a portion for us, as well as city staff.
Well, I have a problem with that. We're cash-rich right now with sales tax. And we're going to take money that could be used to help residents in need and pay for city staff? I really have an issue with that. Secondly, these so-called park ADA improvements don't really seem like ADA improvements to me. They seem like some more pet projects that people want to get done. And I have a problem with that. It has not been very long since we remodeled Andreessen Park. It should be ADA compliant. And if it is not, we should be going back on the person that designed it and the contractor that did it and suing them. And the same thing with Rialto Park. Why are we making ADA improvements after we just spent tons of money in that park? It doesn't make any sense to me. Now, when we go up to the top category on rental mortgage and utility assistance, original budget $760, I forget the amount you used, but it wasn't very much. Is that after we pulled out all the applications that weren't properly done and moved them over to American Recovery Act?
That's correct.
So why didn't we disclose that tonight?
We did, we.
Not in a very good manner, you didn't.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's the genesis of this was.
Well, the genesis of it is, my genesis up here is transparency. It's not to play hide it. So that should have been a little bit more open. But what I'm really bothered in this whole thing, Mr. Fuller, is this. A number of us up here expressed concern about how people were being treated in this process, how businesses were having to wait forever. We listened to a lady here at the last meeting who was in tears over this. I would have thought somebody on your staff, or somebody on your staff, would have called the council members and asked them specifically what they could relate to them and how people were treated. But that never happened. You guys just go along and do your merry business and keep ignoring those of us who represent this community. I'm not here to represent you or you. I'm here to represent the residents of this community. And they don't like this program. It's too cumbersome, it's too difficult to work with, and we're not very friendly in dealing with it, especially when we're getting into their personal lives and personal stuff. But yet, nobody thought that they should come to this council, any member up here that had an issue with it. And I know there's three of us that did. Nobody talked to us. So it's just business as usual in this city. In fact, it's getting worse. Under your administration, it's worse than it was under the previous administration. So I'm not voting for this tonight.
Councilmember Perez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The amount on the rental mortgage utility assistance and the small business under both programs, is it the same amount that is being allocated? Or being dispersed to the applicants?
Are you talking about the CDBG-CV program?
So on each, so is the CDBG amount the same as the Rialto?
No, it is different.
Okay.
So for the Rialto Assistance Program, the businesses can apply for up to $10,000. And that gives them the opportunity to apply for rent, utilities, payroll expenses, supplies that are deemed eligible under the program. Under the CDBG-CV program, what's the amount? $4,000? $4,000 is what was set for the CDBG-CV program, and they can only use the money for rent.
Okay, and then what about on the rental mortgage utility assistance?
For the rental mortgage utility assistance, I believe it's $5,300 for both programs.
For both, so it's the same.
I'm sorry, $4,800 for CV.
Okay. The CDBG-CV program has more requirements than the Rialto Assistance Program, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And I believe in your staff report, we itemized the requirements that HUD requires for that program.
Okay, so would it be possible to increase the amounts being dispersed through that program since it has more requirements? To kind of encourage people to utilize that program more than the, I mean, not necessarily more than the other one, but to also kind of be of interest rather than just going through the Rialto program?
Yes, that is a possibility. And I also wanted to add that we also have applicants that have applied for CDBG-CV. For example, if they apply for January, February, and March, and then they can apply for the Rialto Assistance Program for, you know, additional months that haven't been covered under the CDBG-CV. So we have had residents who have been able to seek assistance from both programs.
Yes, Mayor Protem mentioned, you know, there's a lot of information that is being, you know, requested, and I know that is a requirement. But, you know, again, something to maybe encourage them to apply for it is increasing the amounts to make it worthwhile to provide that information to get what they need.
Yes. That would be up to the city council if they wanted to increase that amount for that program. And also maybe allow them to use it for activities other than just rent. Because right now, the guidelines state that they can only apply and use it for rent under the CDBG-CV program.
Okay, so then potentially, we could change the small business to allow for the same as the Rialto CARES program, correct?
Correct.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Carrasello, you had a comment? All right, well, Councilmember Carrasello has a question first.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I agree with most of what's been said. But I also, I know that for the SWAG program, we used all $197,000, and I'd like to see if we could increase that amount so that we could get more resources out on the streets for that. Seeing that most of this money's not being used, I know that with the SWAG program, we can use some of those resources out there if that's possible. I know that we still have a problem out in our streets, and that should be addressed. And lastly, I'm glad to see that you've implemented some changes to have a better response because that's one of the comments that I got from some of the small businesses and others that the response time just wasn't, I mean, they were waiting for days to just get a response that said, "We received your application." So I appreciate that you are now moving forward to get an instant response.
Thank you. And that's been a collaboration with city staff as well because, as I mentioned, our staff physically wasn't here. So based on comments that we received from applicants, from the city council, from the city manager, we're doing whatever we can to make sure that we streamline the process, that we maintain constant communication with these applicants because we understand how important it is for them to be able to get the assistance, to pay their bills. I did want to address the Mayor Protem's comment because we do take our services to heart, and we deeply want to apologize for the situation that happened with that business owner that did come to speak. I don't have an excuse, except it was human error on our part. It was an application that was missed by our staff. But as soon as we were aware of it, we worked with the city staff. I know city staff was very proactive in getting them funding. We were able to get them funded under both programs. And I believe to date, that's been the only application that we're aware of that this has happened. But as a result of that, as I mentioned, we're, you know, putting new processes into place, working with the city staff. And I think having a presence here at City Hall has really helped because applicants know that they can come and speak to our staff and get information firsthand as needed.
Great, thank you.
City Treasurer. You wanted to comment.
So on your page five, your summary of applications processed under the CDBG-CV program, small business, is this the total number of applications? The city's 19 plus the other six, the 25 applicants? Only three have been approved out of the 25 applicants?
Those are the ones that our staff has approved, but I believe that there were some that have already received reimbursement for. I don't know if we have that number.
So do we know, so on page nine, the small business storefront assistance under the CDBG shows $68,000 that were expended. But that isn't over the three, is it? Over how many small businesses was that $68,000?
It includes the ones the city approved.
So that was 25 applicants total?
Why don't you go?
So do we know, so do we know how many people were actually?
Out of the 19, 11 were approved. And we allocated the $68,000 is what's shown as expended because we are taking into account the applications that we received. We wanted to make sure that we had enough funding to cover all of those applications. So the city processed 19 out of those 19 after we reviewed them. 11 had the proper documentation, and we were able to, or we were able to collect the proper documentation.
Okay, and then under the, on the same page, on page five, the small business under the Rialto Assistance, 34 were approved. But nowhere on here does it show how much money was expended over those 34, coming out of that $600,000 of small business assistance?
For the Rialto Assistance, everyone received the $10,000 for the small business assistance program.
From the $600,000 that was budgeted?
Correct.
And everyone received the maximum?
Correct.
The $10,000, okay. Thank you, those were my questions.
Okay, well, you know, I think there, I'm sitting here trying to follow along with all of the information, the points that, I'll be honest, the points that Mayor Protem said, he basically took some of my thunder. Because I guess I have looked at this, and I'm looking at, from the time the contract was approved, AGI, it was August 2021. Now, it says contract approved, I don't know when they signed it and when we executed, we approved it. Then they transitioned from the CDBG program that the previous person had. They took over, we started auditing. We also had received the other money. I'll call it the CDBG, I guess, the first allocation, which is what's broken down up here. I've been very concerned with this transition, and as it said in one of these reports, 50 rental mortgage utility under CDBG-CV, city had 467, AGI, you had 67. You approved 12, and AGI, in review, you have still five. So I don't know when these were received and when you started. But the number, I don't know if the number received for the city of 467 includes the ones you took over or you have received new ones, but you have AGI you've denied, 50. And I don't understand where those 50 were denied, and then how did you put them to the point of transparency? They were denied out of one thing because they didn't meet the qualifications of stricter CDBG. But then, they should have been, I guess, are they been added to what you received, reprocessed, and then moved down into Rialto Assistance and approved along with the total of 126? And then in review, 44, and then still 38 denied. So it's kind of confusing, but I want to ask about services that we allocated money for, one being burial reimbursement. In all of this, we had one person who received burial information, and therefore, we've now redirected it because we have determined no one really needed to access that amount of money. We didn't even leave $50,000 or $5,000. And so it's to the point of what you said earlier about you're starting things now, getting information out, a marketing program, getting, you know, okay, the burial's one. But then when we go to small business, we started out with $600,000. And then we've dropped it from one thing. I can't see what we expended under the first program, but here, then we've dropped ourselves down to $200,000 was the original budget you said. So I don't know, these are two different pots of money. And then we've proposed the budget to reduce it to 52 and have a net savings or reallocation somewhere at the 148. I've just the numbers here, and three areas that I'm concerned with where we originally were net changes. It brought about $808,000 to be reallocated somewhere else. Then we brought in the ADA improvements and the administration, and we created a food insecurity program. And I'm just not convinced that there isn't small businesses out there that need assistance, and we just haven't really done a good job of reaching out to them, but yet. But yet, still, there's, there's people who have closed their business, and they closed it not knowing that they could have even applied for, and they were storefront. You know, so I, you know, this, this, and I've spoken to the city manager about this. This startup and this conversation started before we went on Christmas break. And the rollout and the improvement, and to you guys' point, finally coming on site. But you've had the contract, and some people have been doing something. But I don't think we've hitting the marks. I think we moved out childcare information. There was childcare, I saw, that we had originally identified.
If I may, Mayor?
Well, I don't see it in the list. Let me just say, what I'm seeing where we've redirected things, I'm looking at the most, amendment number five. And amendment number five has now come back and readjusted some of the numbers down. Originally, you guys had adjusted to put food insecurity at 300,000. Now you're proposing to put it at 100,000. We had park ADA improvements at 340,084. But now we're mending it to go up to 500,000. And again, the things that we are trying to put in there are not really 88. And if we are putting an application to get resources from the state, then we also had the administration, we originally put us 267,916. And now we've revised that down to 150,000. It's, it's just, you know, you put 100,000 back into rental mortgage and utility assistance, because at first you had, it reduced down to 100, so you've added another 100. So I'm having a hard time just trying to get a handle on, we have needs out there. I know they're out there. I don't think we've done a great job of getting the information out, or going back and looking at those applications that we denied, and finding out that they still need assistance. And this presentation, as I remember the last time we talked, I wanted to see timeframes on applications and when they were received, how long it took to process. I see that you noted it. Overall, application process is two to three weeks. Prove it. Prove it. Don't just tell me a nice statement. You got an asterisk in here on the 50 denied, and I'm, I'm kind of an asterisk geek. I go looking for it. What does it mean? What, what is the asterisk in the presentation? What is it? Tell me what 50 denied and an asterisk next to it means.
So the asterisk was placed on the presentation, as I touched upon it, to advise that those applications were denied slash closed, and those were applications that were on the backlog.
But it didn't say that anywhere in here, in the PowerPoint presentation?
I think I mentioned it during the PowerPoint presentation. And if I may, I believe we also identified it under table one in the staff report.
Table one, staff report. Okay. You said, asterisk says 12 have been approved under Rialto Assistance, other files were closed due to inactivity. That doesn't mean it's a denial.
Yeah. So that's why I clarified that all applications were not necessarily denied. Some of them were closed due to inactivity, because we had received applications.
Well, see, that's what I'm concerned with, the inactivity on whose part?
Well, there were some applications when we received the pile of applications that were backdated to May, June. And so when I, our staff started calling the applicants to follow up and say, "We have a backlog of applications, we're following up," some applicants didn't respond, and so their files were closed. But that's something that obviously we can't control, since we took over the program later in the year. I also wanted to point out that we are not making any changes to the budget that was approved for the Rialto Assistance Programs. So...
I thought this was what we were going through.
This is for the budget of the CDBGCV. And so the, the reason the information for the Rialto Assistance Programs is in here, and that includes the rental mortgage, the burial service that you mentioned, the small business program. Those are the funds that were allocated by the city council and approved on December 14th. We are not making any budgetary changes to those. We are only making budgetary recommendations for the CDBGCV funding. And so we, based on the comments that were provided at the last council meeting, there was questions regarding how many applications had been processed. And so that's why this, this information was included in the PowerPoint presentation.
I guess I still need to know, so what did we do to really go back and see who could qualify on the money that we obviously didn't spend? And we determined that some of the applications weren't eligible. But it's, it's kind of, you're asking us to now reallocate. First, you had one proposal, and now you've come up with a subsequent amendment five recommendation, if I'm understanding this correctly. And that's to put some of the money, to move money back into some areas. Because, why?
So we started making phone calls. One of the directives that was provided by the ad hoc committee was, we, we had sampled over 100 applications of the ones that the city had qualified, of the 467. And so we had brought up, as a concern to the city, that of the ones that we had sampled, we found that a lot of them were not eligible for funding or would meet HUD's requirements. And so therefore, we wanted to present the city with an opportunity to make changes to the budget, so that you're able to spend the funding timely. At that ad hoc committee meeting, we were requested to start calling some of the applicants that were funded in 2021, rather than starting with applicants that were funded in 2020, when the origin, when the city originally kicked off the program. Based on some of those phone calls, we are starting to collect some documentation from those applicants. So we amended our recommendation to allow some budget, so that if we collect that applicant, that documentation from the applicants, the city can be properly reimbursed by HUD for those applications.
Okay. Well, with all that explanation, if we're still the ones sitting here to make a decision, I am not looking to put money into the park area right now. We need to figure out, that's, you know, so the way, and I'm trying to understand, between the last meeting and this one, the ad hoc committee had another meeting?
No.
Oh. So how did we come back with some further revisions on the numbers that they had proposed the last time the ad hoc committee met? How did we come up with these second adjustments? Somebody just made some suggestions of recommendations?
We're making recommendations, but the city council can change the amounts as designated.
Okay. So, okay, so the committee didn't necessarily, they, they, does the committee concur? Subcommittee? You don't know?
So during the ad hoc committee, while we were going over the items, the ad hoc committee recommended these particular areas that are before you. In regards to the amounts, after they made certain adjustments, they allocated those numbers based off of projects or opportunities that were out there. So that's how those numbers ended up coming about.
And, and in the latest...
But I'm saying after that, and after we had the discussion, the council meeting before, those numbers were presented. Now they come back with some modifications, amendment number five, and the ad hoc committee did not have been put in that.
No. So, so as Lisette mentioned, she's getting some positive feedback on some of these applications for rent and mortgage assistance and small business assistance under the HUD requirements. So because we're seeing some positive movement, which is what the ad hoc committee wanted us to do, that's why some of those numbers have changed. And in fact, one of the recommendations we have is perhaps to increase the amount of assistance to residents and to small businesses under the much stricter HUD requirements. Maybe make it double what's available in the Rialto Assistance Program to incentivize people. Yeah, it's intrusive, we need some of your documentation on your income and other HUD required documents, but you can get double the assistance, as opposed to getting it from the Rialto Assistance Program.
On the food insecurity, so we allocated money? Question I had was, how many times will people be able to apply for food insecurity? Once, or three times? How do, you know, what will happen? I mean, we're talking about allocation, but it doesn't sound like we have a program, I mean, a layout on how the qualifications would be and how often they could apply. Could it be, if it's this, so I don't know if you have that, but I really think that we're talking about...
So it would, it would be very similar to the allocation amounts that we have set for utilities or mortgage assistance. So the council would help set that amount on how much residents could get assigned to them or awarded. So it just, that, that part basically comes back to, does council want to allocate $1,000 for somebody who's looking for it? You get to set that amount.
Well, I, I am not understanding why we need to try and put money into physical improvements when this money was sent to us with the intent of trying to assist our community. I don't see a need for money for us to pay ourselves, or pay the, because on the CDBG monies, there's already a 20%. That's on the regular one, which usually takes care of the third-party administrator, which would be you on behalf. So I'm not, and then, like I said, there was, we had the burial. I don't see it carried over. You know, you talk about putting more money into SWAG, but I think SWAG had resources that we had allocated. So I don't see there's no any recognition for any more increase to it. And, you know, I, I think I would want to see, really see the numbers. And, and some, I, for that, I just want to see some numbers and see people actually getting secured and, and not finding themselves back on the street. There was something else that was missing. I guess the other piece about the ambulance, the ambulatory service? Wasn't that a part of the CDBG one? This would be the Rialto Assistance?
Correct. Same with the burial.
So here we go, kind of mixing the, the information.
Correct.
So there was one last one. Mayor Protem, you had a question again?
I, I believe that when we pulled this from the agenda and asked this to come back, we also asked to have information on American Recovery Act money included with this report. Because there, there's categories that are the same in American Recovery Act money that are in CDBG money, and we're not really getting a full comparison of this thing. For instance, I believe there's SWAG money in American Recovery Act. Is there not? Do you know how much?
There, there is. And that's, that's why the Rialto Assistance Program, which is the CARES Act program...
Why didn't you bring back what we asked for?
It, it's in the staff report. And so, and it was in the PowerPoint. So the Rialto Assistance Program is described on page two, and there's $600,000 for the Small Business Assistance Program, $150,000 for child...
Who wrote this staff report?
It was a combination of staff. So the information you requested is in the staff report. The CDBGCV program...
I guess I'll hire a lawyer to read it and tell me what it, what it says and means, because I frankly, am having a hard time with that.
Okay.
I asked for some simple comparisons.
There is, this is not, this is not matching up. I'm sorry. It does not. I mean, you just pointed out Rialto Assistance Program timeline and the money we dispersed there. But yet, still, we're supposed to be talking about making adjustments on this community CDBGCV money, right?
Correct. So based on your questions, that's why we put the timeline in for both the CDBG program and the Rialto Assistance Program for the programs funded through the CARES Act, or I'm sorry, through the ARPA funds.
Well, I, I'm sorry, and I agree with Mayor Protem. It would have been helpful.
It is, it is 9:30, and we're on the second tab item. There's something wrong with your process.
Okay. So...
I would suggest that, that they bring this back with some of the recommendations, and maybe a, a page, so that we're not flipping around and comparing too much, because it's, it's not, if we're taking this long, that means that we're having a problem with really looking at what's going on, and how we're actually moving the funds, and how they, it's just too much, it's not summarized. And all the items that are asked for, we're having to flip around and try to find them. So maybe a little more clarity, maybe on one single sheet. We'll bring our glasses, and we'll be able to, to read. I know it's, this is perfect, you can see it clearly, but you're having to flip around too much. Maybe add a few more columns where you're putting in all the information that we're asking for, so that it makes it a little more clear. That's my suggestion.
Yeah. And I think we're trying to, trying to figure out, how do we redirect money so that we could spend it before the end of the year or something? But it's, it's not clear. It just, it's hard to feel comfortable about acting on it. I mean, I've got a list, I know we went through the list again, about the, we're treating this money as if it's the regular CDBG money that we get, which is a whole nother allocation that comes, which is not the CARES Act money. And so there's three pots of money. And I, from what I understand, we're going to see a report soon on recommendations for the 2223 allocation. And there's concerns on that. You know, believe it or not. So I haven't seen it, and I would recommend bringing it back, and I would recommend, to Mayor Protem's point, we have a subcommittee, but that doesn't mean that people can't reach out to us individually and hear what our concerns are, or help us to validate what our, our concerns are in terms of, there's a need out there. How in the world could we be a community, middle-income, what you can't find people, you can't contact them, probably because they've, they've gone. They've, they've not been able to hold on. You know, there was an eviction moratorium for a while, but that ended. I don't know when you start calling them. If you start calling them this week, and, or last week or two weeks ago, the moratorium ended. A month ago? So they may have already been moved out or gone out. So I would say, I, can we move to bring this back? Keep it open?
I, if, if it pleases the council, I would suggest giving us a little more time to make this a little easier to digest, and bringing it back at the first meeting in June. You know, the, the whole complication was in all the documentations that's required under the HUD regulations to get residents and businesses qualified. I, I, I'd support or recommend the, incentivizing and perhaps leaving some more higher amounts for residents, mortgage assistance, and small business assistance...
And let me just say this. I, I think we asked it in the beginning, and I know I did. We talked about, they came in, and they started reviewing the documents that weren't right and all that stuff. But as you get an application in, I'd like to see a spreadsheet. When did you get the application? When did it go through your process? How long did it take? When did they either get eligible and receive funds, or they were denied? What's that timeframe?
So with the CDBGCV program, the 467 applications were actually approved by city staff. And they selected and audited those and found that...
I heard that.
None of them were qualified. We get that.
Okay, we got that. Now they have been doing applications on their dime, on their time. I want to see the timeframe.
Can we get a copy of these applications? I'd like to see the business application.
Okay. How come they were denied?
Because I, I'd like to read it. I have a little business experience. And I'd like to read it and see if...
The reasons why they were denied.
The complaints I'm hearing about it are true.
Okay.
I just had the business text me while I'm sitting here.
Okay.
So.
That's what I would.
What action do you need to continue this or just to move it to?
Need to move, reopen the public hearing? I'll make that motion.
You make the motion.
To reopen the public hearing?
Because you closed it.
Yes, we need to reopen it.
Do you want to second it? Or I'll second it.
You, you don't legally need to reopen the public hearing, you've done the public hearing twice. My understanding is what you're concerned with is the comments from the, from the council, which we can do without reopening the public hearing.
We can?
Yes.
But I think we need to reopen it, because maybe by the time we get to June 10th, we'll hear from some other people.
Certainly within.
And I don't think I would want to close out their opportunity to speak.
Okay.
Very good.
So.
I'll second.
You've moved and I'll second.
I'll move to reopen the public hearing.
And I'll second.
Okay.
Really quick, I'm sorry. I, I know that there's, you know, some areas of concern, but can we possibly give some of the recommendations if everyone agrees on maybe some of the amounts getting moved? I know that they're supposed to bring back some additional information, but as far as amounts being reallocated, is that something that we want to maybe recommend now or discuss at the next meeting?
Well, I don't think we've spent the money that we already have allocated.
Well, we're, we're discussing the possibility of increasing the amounts just to.
Are there areas that we're short of money in?
Well, we, on the reallocations, I'm sorry, let me go back here.
We don't have money in?
I don't believe we do. I think we were.
No, so removing, for example, the Park 88 improvements, putting them back to the rental mortgage utility and increasing the amount that is being dispersed to the applicants because it is more, more of a, you know, tedious process with this CDBG CV application as opposed to the Rialto assistance.
But I think what we already had was proposed that there was 200,000 to be in there. It was 100,000. Have we exhausted the 100,000? I don't think so. And then we were going to propose to put in just 100, then they added another 100, and we have a force 200,000. So I don't, I'm, I'm not proposed, I don't think we will be processing that many applications that we're going to exhaust whatever we have between now and the first meeting in June.
Two weeks away.
Correct. So if we eliminated the 560, which is the 410 for the park and the 150 for the administration, we would need to move those funds back up to, you know, rental mortgage assistance.
And small business as well?
Or more for small business assistance.
Then we're taking action. We just opened up the public hearing.
We haven't moved the money.
No, I, I know that. I'm, I guess I'm trying to formulate when we bring this back with perhaps better recommendations for your consideration. And, and one of the ways, as I mentioned, is with the small business assistance, opening it up so it's not just rental assistance, but other business expenses and also increasing.
I'm not open to that, you guys, if you want to do that, because I haven't really seen what applications they have to date and how many, it doesn't look like it's going to be all of a sudden a influx. If you go with the chart that they said of what they have right now, they still have things in review. Small business, they have 12 applications as of today in review, or five, three, if we're going with just what they're looking at at CDBG. See, this is why it's, we're talking about the money in CDBG CV, but we also have the Rialto assistance information here. And so, I, I don't know, from the time we've been doing this, without knowing when they received the applications and why are those three still in review? There's no, no answer, and so I don't understand why need, what's the urgency to move the money?
That, that's fine. I, I, we, we have your action to take, bring it back on the 10th.
Well, we've spent, okay, it's, any objections to that? That we move it to the, the motion was, we reopened the public hearing and we're moving it to the first meeting in June.
We closed the public hearing already.
No, we opened it. We're opening it back up and leaving it. And extending it to June.
The motion includes moving it, extending it to the first meeting in June.
All in favor? Anybody oppose? Motion carries. Okay, now into tab three, and yes. Oh, darn.
This'll be another hour.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council. I will be a, try to be a good steward of your time. The COVID update for this evening is very similar with, we saw the last three meetings. We continue to see a rise in cases with the most transmissible versions of the subvariant of Omicron, but that's not related to a correlation with increased hospitalizations. So hospitalizations remain low, even though transmission rates remain high. The good news is our employee health is good, there's no operational impacts to our, our city employees, so that remains to be good. There's, again, no hospitalization increases since our last meeting or since what we saw in January. Those anecdotal information, or of data available that the subvariants of Omicron are less severe, which is, you know, matching up to the numbers we're seeing with increased cases, but no change in hospitalizations. Following last city council meeting, we did have several questions that I just wanted to address while we're here. There was a question that came up about air quality, and the CDC had acknowledged that patients suffering from COVID-19 or the long COVID symptoms that have recently had COVID and are still displaying symptoms 30 to 60 days after they recover are at greater risk for low air quality locations in wildland fire areas. This risk is due to compromised heart and lung functions brought on by the pandemic. Some people are at more risk, obviously, with deeper health conditions and the effects from wildfire, smoke and others. These at-risk populations include children of less than 18, adults aged 65 or older, pregnant women, people with chronic health conditions such as heart, lung disease, asthma and diabetes, outdoor workers, or people who have lower socioeconomic status, including individuals experiencing homelessness or those who have limited access to medical health care. We also had a question about the risk of being unvaccinated still. Unvaccinated individuals are five times more likely, according to CDC, to contact, contract COVID-19 multiple times post initial infection compared to vaccinated people. And that's because immunity acquired through infection is very short-lived. It is unknown how long that immunity is exactly, but experts predict that's three to six months. Locally, we still have testing sites open at the Johnson Center and the drive-through clinic on Bonneview. The drive-through clinic on Bonneview, city staff is working to negotiate the extension. Currently, they are charging for tests for people who are uninsured at Bonneview, but we're still offering free testing at the Johnson Center. City staff is also working with another vendor to provide free, free testing at Jerry Eves Park. Today, we received an update from the county of San Bernardino, offering a site extension for both testing and vaccinations that are free to all, all community members through September. So we received that today, and we have till Monday to reply to that request. That is, you know, just a testament to our good collaboration with the county and the squeaky wheel, getting our Rialto citizens the best care we can provide. So with that, I would gladly take any questions related to the, to the COVID update. With the increases in the numbers, we certainly recommend continuing the local emergency as we have the passover meetings and, you know, take any recommendations you have at this time.
Okay, thank you. I think the question was, you said there was vaccinations occurring where? County.
So we're still doing vaccinations at Grace Vargas? We're doing testing at the Johnson Center? That will continue through September.
So the Metro Lake South situation, are they still using that location?
They are still using that location. They are beginning to charge at that location for uninsured. City has an update on that.
So last week, they reached out to us and let us know that because their grant funding has either been paused or discontinued by the federal government, they are doing free COVID testing for those who provide their insurance information, and if they don't have insurance, they are, they are referring them to county sites to be tested for free or charging 75 to $100, depending on what test they desire. So we recently were approached by a different company asking to provide a new COVID testing site over at Jerry Eves, which will do it for free. They are technically in the same type of situation, however, they are only recommending charging for the uninsured for quick testing, which is, which would be $29.
Jerry Eves.
Well, I have a question. If we had money.
Yeah.
For testing in CDBG, why are we eliminating it?
They have to be Rialto residents, and they have to qualify under the HUD regulations.
So these, these aren't Rialto residents?
Not everybody that comes to these sites are Rialto residents.
But we could.
Can we?
Determine.
You, we would have to, again, require additional documentation to verify that they qualify for that service so that we can reimburse them.
What would that be?
The same requirements that you're requiring for CDBG CV funding.
Oh, they gotta give you tax forms and all to get a.
They'll have to provide similar documentation because it is a HUD program.
Can't we just fund the program itself?
What is wrong with this country?
Can't we just fund the program itself?
So that. Can we what?
Couldn't we just fund the program itself?
I guess.
You have to go through this application process in order to get a test.
Well, I think we need better, maybe we need to be educated on our applications and what are the criteria, because I guess if we put money, here we go again, from the ARPA or the Rialto system that doesn't have the same strict criteria, and if they meet in a census tract data, they, they basically get a pass, a go-pass, without bringing all this documentation. It sounds like, this is really amazing that, why don't we, novel idea, why don't we take some of our own money from our tax revenue and make it available to a Rialto resident if they show up with an ID, an address that says they live in Rialto?
One way or another, we should try to figure out how to fund.
That's, I mean.
Because if these people, so the criteria is if they don't have insurance, then we're charging them. Those are the people that most need the help. If you have insurance, you just went to Kaiser. You wouldn't go to this drive-through. I think we're, we're, this is all backwards. We should figure out how to fund that program so that people are, because the, the cases are rising and we're, we're going to get, you know, stuck in the red tape of this all and, and not help our residents, which is what we need to be doing here. So we, we really need to figure this out and take some action.
And just for clarification, that new contractor, Jerry Eves, would provide it for free unless they want the rapid test, which would be $29, right?
Correct, so then that would give the city two free locations with the exception of the rapid test.
Correct, because it's free at the Johnson Center.
Well, I, I.
What are we doing with our resources?
Here again, I guess my question is, if I need it, if I think I have COVID and I need a test, how do I really know where to go? I'm gonna, I live closest to this parking lot right over here. I'm gonna pull up in that parking lot, not knowing that if I don't have insurance, I gotta pay 100 and some dollars? Did you say?
75.
Yeah. That doesn't make any sense.
So we are working on getting all of the information updated on our outlets, but we've also asked that the company over at Bonneview also provide the county information to those patrons who are not insured, so they can continue to get their COVID testing down the street here at the Carl Johnson Center.
Yeah, I, I get that, but we should still be helping them. We can't be sending people around everywhere. No one's going around trying to get a COVID test unless they really need one, unless they're, so for us to be shipping them around to different places is, is irresponsible. We, we really need to figure something out.
So are we still providing the in-home, that they can come and pick up anywhere from us, fire? Or did we exhaust those and haven't bought anymore?
Yeah, we picked up additional COVID test kits. They are available at city clerk's office, and we do provide them at the farmer's market. Those are for antigen testing.
Okay, and those are require, is there a requirement for them to receive them? Or is there a number, a maximum amount they can receive in one request? Well, I don't know.
No, I, I can answer that. They can pick up as many.
How did we pay for, how did we pay for those?
Many is, I, I received those from.
We got those from the county, sir.
So, so they're, they're out there every Wednesday, they're at the office. People are not actually asking for them or picking them up, but when they see them, they pick up one, maybe one or two. We have them out there every Wednesday, they're at the office.
They're in the office in addition to Wednesday's, because I know at one time there was a request, there was quite a few people coming and they were trying to sell them. So there was a request for.
When they first started, it was overwhelming, they were selling them, but as time went on, they're not picking up as many, but we do have, we do have those available.
I think it was during that big wave at the beginning of the year.
Okay, I have, I know that that's an issue still here, but I have a question on this report and kind of the, the status of where we are quickly.
Yes, ma'am.
Everything, get mask or lifted, and what is the COVID protocol now? If someone is, is positive, what is, do we have any protocol? Or is that just left up to the individuals to, to decide if, that, what? And do what do we need to do? Because I guess the conversation is, do we need to go back into declaring our situation where we can be hybrid or be in person? And I'm posing that because of, for, it seems like there's no clarity at the state level or the county level, so we have to decide within our own jurisdiction exactly what do we want to do.
Yes, ma'am. Not changes, not many changes have occurred with positivity on how we treat COVID positive, but a big change occurred on May 7th. We're in the state, Caloosa adopted the CDPH, the Public Health Recommendations for Vaccinated Versus Unvaccinated Status for Exposures. Now vaccinated or unvaccinated exposures are now only sent into quarantine if symptomatic. And so the recommendation is 10 days with a mask or until symptoms develop. And so where it used to be anytime you were exposed, if unvaccinated, you would be placed into quarantine in a workplace. Then the big change happened with Caloosa on the 7th, where now it is a recommendation to wear a mask for 10 days, but not quarantine until it develops symptoms.
Okay. And what is, you've mentioned, the good news is we didn't have any increases in our employees, but what is, has there been positivity testing in the city of Rialto?
Well, and, and to Mayor, Mayor, to your question, I would point to the wastewater data, which I'm glad we're still doing.
Yes, I, I was going to ask for you that.
If you look at the, the running table that's on page six, our last sample on April 26th, if you look at the viral load, which is what's really important, it's really ticked up from a non-detect on April 3rd, and we're back up to where we were on February 13th. So we are seeing an uptick in our wastewater in terms of the viral load, and then, of course, they extrapolate the number of cases. So it is concerning, and to your point, we can bring an action as part of this for next council meeting to, if it's the council's pleasure, to allow for virtual or hybrid meetings in case we have a need to do that.
Well, I feel, because what I'm hearing is that there's an uptick, it's another strand, but it's not, you know, one wasn't as, as deadly, or not deadly, but is severe. Now this one's supposed to be somewhat more severe, and we're going into summer, so I think we need to look at making ourselves with that option to be available. So I don't know what action we need to take, council?
Well, council, I think it depends on what option we're looking at. We can set it up for either. What's expressly in the, in the Brown Act is to go fully virtual if we think that we're not able to meet all safely in this facility. If that was the case, you could give us that direction tonight to say, set up the next meeting for that, and we could have the resolutions that you've adopted in the past that, that make the necessary filings. Some cities have gone to something that's called the hybrid. Some cities have gone to something that's called the hybrid, uh, Zoom meeting. It's not necessarily in the Brown Act itself, but since a number of cities have used it successfully, it would be something we could consider doing. And that would be, some of the council members could be in the chamber along with some socially-distanced , uh, members of the public. Other council members could, uh, attend by Zoom if there was a health reason to do so. You're, um, a member of a sensitive community, or, uh, of an age that might make you more susceptible, you have existing health conditions, or a family member has existing health conditions that make you more susceptible, uh, or maybe that you've been exposed, or you actually are exhibiting symptoms. Uh, I think that we could justify that type of hybrid mechanism, but the council members who participated in Zoom, we'd at least need to articulate some general health reason for doing so, rather than just saying, "I'm on vacation." If that's the case, then we have to comply with the standard, uh, provision in the Brown Act that requires us to do that.
Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't speaking of it, 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 out of convenience.
Yeah.
Okay? I was speaking it out of a health concern.
Right.
And I think the hybrid, uh, pathway probably would be the better one to consider, uh, because I, now, what we have is a choice where, uh, you either come or don't come. We don't have any way to, uh, make any other options available.
And if that's the consensus of the council, uh, what I'll do is have a resolution for you to adopt that ratifies that we're going to move to that system until the council says otherwise, and that council members can notify us in advance of whether they plan to attend by Zoom or not because of health reasons. And I'll articulate those in the, in the ordinance. Not each individual member's private health concerns, but that individual members may, for that reason, participate by Zoom.
I would appreciate it, because I think the option to have masks in public places is now left up to the individuals. Nobody is requiring it, we're not requiring it, and we're not enforcing it. So, I don't know what other options we have that gives us some flexibility. And back to your point, Mayor, uh, Councilmember Charazos, if you have some recommendations on how we can provide some resources? Or do you want the staff to come back with something?
Yeah, I'd like the staff to come back.
Or would you like the, uh, city manager with his, uh, sick authority to implement something and bring it back to us?
Yeah, and he has things to be at.
ASAP.
We probably can't wait till the next meeting.
I know, that's why I said, under his authority, maybe.
Under your authority, yeah, to act on something right away, because in two weeks, we might have a huge spike already and we'll have waited that long, so.
Well, they're requiring, a lot of people are requiring people to get a test before they'll even consider them to come if they get a job offer. But if you don't have resources, you don't have insurance, then you kind of stop.
Yeah, you're the one that needs the assistance and the help.
Okay. Uh, is there any other action required on that one, other than the direction given?
Local emergency.
Local emergency, thank you. Okay. Uh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Perez.
Sorry, I thought we were gonna move to continue the local emergency, but.
Oh, you're right then.
Yes, we do, so.
Hmm? She's moving?
Okay.
I'm sorry, and seconded by Council, Councilmember Traheal. Any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. Okay. On to tap number four. I'll give you a break. You get your walk, then I'm done.
Right here. Let me introduce you. Ready? Um, so, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and council members. Um, tonight, we're here to request the City Council, Rialto Housing Authority, Rialto Utility Authority and Successor Agency to accept, review and file the fiscal year 2020, 2021 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report and related documents. We have Brian here, who's a managing partner with LSL, um, the city's auditors. Um, he's prepared a PowerPoint and is available to answer questions on the results of the fiscal year 2021 audit.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. My name is Brian Gruber with LSL CPAs, the Independent Financial Statement Auditor for the city. LSL has been engaged to conduct a financial statement audit for the year ended June 30, 2021, and also to assist in preparing, uh, the city's annual, um, audited financial statements, referred to as an ACFR, Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. Uh, to provide a little bit of information on, uh, the background of an audit, uh, an audit, a financial statement audit first involves obtaining an understanding of the internal controls of the city and assessing risk factors over financial reporting, in addition to performing, uh, testing over that financial information based on the assessment. So, internal controls, those are those, uh, policies and procedures that the city has in place, uh, to safeguard assets of the city and also to detect or correct any, um, material errors that are, might be arising in the accounting system for the city. Um, a little bit about our process, um, a financial statement audit first involves an interim audit, uh, which occurred over the months of December and January. This is our planning phase of the audit. Uh, we obtain an understanding of the processes and procedures. Uh, we perform a series of inquiries through, um, you know, throughout the city. Uh, we document and test the flow of financial information through the city. And, 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 and again, we were, we conduct a risk assessment over that, um, that information gained. The, uh, the, the second phase of the audit, uh, is the year-end audit. So, after the city has had a chance to close its books and records and, uh, they're ready for the audit, uh, we perform various account analysis, uh, over that financial information. Uh, we test, um, the cutoff of that information, and we also obtain third-party confirmation, uh, for the accuracy of the amounts and the disclosures in the financial statement. Uh, this all comes together in the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, which includes an introductory, a financial and a statistical section. Um, the introductory provides an overview of the government, uh, overview of the city. The financial section is the financial statements and disclosures, and the statistical section is, uh, 10-year trend information of financial and economic and demographic information of the city. LSL's been engaged to, uh, express an opinion on those financial statements. Now, management at the city is responsible for the information that goes into that report. Uh, LSL's responsibility is to express an opinion that that information is, um, fairly stated in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, and the information's materially correct and can be relied upon by readers of the financial statement. Uh, we express an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, uh, which basically means that we have completed our audit and the financial statements have been fairly stated in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles and is materially correct. The results of our audit, um, also communicate a couple letters in addition to our opinion letter. Uh, the first is our report on internal control and compliance. We're required to communicate to the governing body, uh, the identification of any, um, uh, material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal control. Uh, a few matters were discussed in the, in that letter pertaining to the year-end close. Um, some necessary adjustments were needed for, uh, the reconciliation of grant, the accrual of expenditure. Uh, we also identified, um, or made a recommendation, uh, for, regarding the timeliness of the bank reconciliations conducted at the city. And, and lastly, uh, following up on a, a matter related to the update of the city's accounting, um, policies and procedures manuals. Um, in addition, we have an auditor communication letter. The, uh, purpose of the auditor communication is to provide an overview of the audit, identify any other matters that are, um, important or relevant. Um, the only matter to call to your attention was just calling out, uh, the restatement of some fund balances in the financial statement, um, that were, uh, done this year. And, and secondly, a couple accounting standards changes which affect the reporting. Uh, the city implemented GASB 84, which, uh, changed some, uh, reporting related to fiduciary activities, um, in addition to, um, terminology changes of the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. Looking forward, this coming year, the city will be required to implement GASB 87, which has to do financial, um, accounting for leases. This will impact the city and, uh, require some work and adjustments in order to comply. And that will be for this coming year. So, in summary, LSL's been engaged to conduct a financial statement audit. The results of the financial statement audit are the audited financial statements, or the ACFR, and, um, an unmodified opinion was rendered. In addition to, we provided you two communication letters, our report on internal control and compliance, and also our auditor communication, and the findings are provided in those reports. Um, that is my presentation. Again, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, I didn't know if anyone have any particular questions on, on the report.
Move to receive and file.
Second.
It's been moved by Mayor Protem Scott to receive and file, seconded by Councilmember Traheal. Any objections to that? Hearing none? Thank you. Now, we will move into tap number five.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem and council. I'm really excited to bring this item to you. This is an item to consider award of a construction contract to Calmax Engineering. This would be for reconstruction of the South Riverside segment. So, this is a segment from south of I-10 to the south city limit. You might recall, I had recommended last fall that you reject the bids we received at that time, namely because we were hopeful we were gonna get the $3 million federal appropriation, which we ultimately did not get, which would have required us to federalize the project. But it also allowed us to rethink the project as it was originally designed and also rebid it to have it be, um, constructed at night. Uh, you, you did reject the bid, uh, we, you did approve a, a contract with South Star Engineering to do constructibility review. Uh, there was outreach with the different logistics warehouses in that area and the employers in that area, they did confirm they would prefer the night work. So, that project was redesigned, uh, was rebid, uh, the estimate was 9.4 million. The low bid came in just a little bit over that at 9.6 million, uh, and so, we would recommend that you, uh, approve the actions, which includes approving the contract, amending the construction management firm's contract for the full scope of their CM work, that's now necessary with award of the contract. Uh, I'd recommend delegating me authority to scrutinize change orders up to a total of 480,000 to make sure the project moves forward, only for legitimate, uh, change orders that I would review and approve, uh, and approve the actions as presented. So, with that, I would turn it to you for any questions.
All right. Thank you. Do we have, uh, the representative for the company here? Oh, good.
A whole bunch of them.
A whole bunch. All right.
Two questions.
You have Mayor Protem Scott.
Uh, just, just a question, do, do we have a consultant to deal with public relations and public outreach like we did on the north end?
We do. South Star has that and is part of their scope.
Okay, is it, is there, is it pretty much the same as what we've done on the north side?
Definitely. Um, we will definitely have that outreach, uh, component. Even though it's night work, it's still gonna impact in the morning, you know, those earlier commute, uh, hours, uh, and, um, so, yes, that's an important component of their work.
And my, my, my next question, because it is night work, and for those of you that have driven Riverside Avenue at night on the south end, people tend to drive very fast and at high rates of speed. So, are we going to pay overtime to Rialto PD to set out there like the highway patrol like CHP does on the freeway?
Cozy.
I think it would be a smart thing.
I, 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 I think that's a great idea, and also to set out the signage that it's double fees, um, at, like you see, uh, on the highways. So, I, I think we'll do all of those measures to make sure people drive safe and slow during that construction.
Okay. I think we should use the same system that Caltrans uses.
Cozy. Mm-hmm. Okay, any other questions, comments?
Yeah, I, I do have a question. I know, um, as we're do, working on the section up here on Riverside Avenue, we were doing the curbs and, uh, the ADA, um, access. Are you gonna do similar to, uh, that stretch as well?
Absolutely, and that was part of what was added into this project when we redesigned it, was to make sure that we're addressing all those deficient curbs and sidewalks and ramps.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Can we make sure we adjust the PD's budget to cover overtime and bill it against the project?
Okay, my, uh, question and comment, just following up on the public outreach plan, it, besides the fact that it was, uh, what we've done on the north side has been more day and this is night, the other thing is, I'm looking at kind of what's lifted here, but I really would like to know how, how do we plan on really interfacing with the industrial business community that's down there? Uh, it, I don't see something that really says how they will know, because a lot of their stuff is coming in, shipments and activity and trucking is coming in at night, or heavy at, heavy at night, so.
And, and we've already done some of that outreach, and they already have a list of contacts and have communicated with those, uh, logistics warehouses and other employers, so we will have that constant communication with them during construction.
Yeah, because I see something down here, Bluebird School Buses, um, school business that I'm thinking. Is that in relate, not, that's just a general, somebody's identifying something, some coordination, but I don't really believe we have any schools.
They do bus repairs down there.
Bus repair, but this is talking about, uh, coordination with City of Colton.
Would they, does Colton store their school buses there? They might.
Familiar with that.
Yeah, so, I was just looking at things, but anyway. All right, well, it'll be great, Ed.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved by Mayor Protem Scott, seconded by Councilmember Traheal. Any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, now we have maintenance and facilities, uh, will be presented by.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem and members of the council. I am here this evening to request that the City Council approve the renewal of a five-year contract with the San Bernardino County Fire Department for Household Hazardous Waste Collection Services, beginning with fiscal year 2023 through fiscal year 2027, for a cumulative contract amount of $758,073, and authorize the city manager to execute all related documents on behalf of the city. Since 1993, the city has contracted with San Bernardino County Fire to transport and dispose of household hazardous waste received at the satellite facility located behind the city's maintenance yard at 246 South Willow. As a satellite facility, the Rialto site is permitted under the county's umbrella. The county therefore assumes a liability as the waste generator indemnifying the city of any waste handling and disposal liabilities. Additional services provided under this contract including, include training, phone support, emergency response, coordination of waste transportation and disposal, and general collection site supplies. An HHW plan is also a component of the city's waste management plan mandated by the state. An HHW plan is also a component of the city's waste management plan mandated by the state. Hosting this site is a cost effective way of meeting this requirement. The Rialto site is one of fourteen satellite facilities in the San Bernardino County, operating under the county HHW program. The Rialto HHW site has been in operation for twenty-nine years. Annually, Rialto serves over twenty-six thousand, or excuse me, twenty-six hundred residents collecting over one hundred and seventy-one thousand pounds of chemical waste, including but not limited to waste oil and filters, batteries, antifreeze, paint, household cleaners, and sharps, needles and land sets. The Rialto site operates on two Fridays and two Saturdays each month, and is open for extended hours on the four community cleanup days each year. The Rialto HHW site is operated by city personnel who are trained and certified by the county program instructors annually. The annual increase for the next five year contract term is based on the Consumer Price Index from the Bureau of Labor Statistics. The table included in the staff report shows the contract amounts for the next five years. This concludes my presentation, and myself and a representative from San Bernardino County Fire are here to answer any questions that you might have.
All right, thank you. Question I had was, well, looking at the list, I noticed that two of our three neighboring cities were not on here, but I kind of said, well, maybe that's because they contract with county for fire services, but then I see San Bernardino's on here, and they also, I think, are contracted with county service, county fire services. So my question is, perhaps the representative could explain that? And then I was wondering, it seems like with that said, San Bernardino is providing services Monday through Friday, basically five days a week from nine AM to four PM. And I was wondering how our services are to our citizens, and we find there's a need or greater need, or we've seen setting the same schedule?
For our site, being open four days each month, from eight AM to twelve noon on the four days that we are open, seems to be adequate for our site. I think that I'll have Jose from County Fire address the questions related to the county's facility and their operating, operating hours. I think their traffic is much more than our, our site, and I'll let him speak to that.
Okay.
Hello, good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and members of the council. My name is Jose Rodriguez, I'm the Assistant Fire Marshal for the Household Hazardous Waste Program. So as you see over here, we do have fourteen permanent collection facilities throughout the county. This is a regional program, so any resident of the county could use any one of these facilities. So city residents of Rialto could use any one of these sites.
Okay.
So we are available, like you mentioned, San Bernardino, we're open Monday to Friday, because that's the busiest site, and that's where our main, that's our headquarters, so that's our central facility. And other jurisdictions do have their own satellite facility. You were mentioning neighboring cities that may not have one. That's because they haven't gotten to the point where they, where their council has approved that for them, so that's why we make our, our regional programs, so their cities could use any one of our sites. So it's basically wherever they are, or whatever facility is open, they're allowed to use that facility at, you know.
Okay.
Then I wondered why you were here, I thought maybe you were applying for the fire chief job. Where's he at?
Does that answer your question?
Yes, no, that's, that's, that's more than.
Well, there he is.
Okay, okay, if there's any other questions, if not, could I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I think I heard somebody over here, but Councilmember Carisalas moved, and I heard Councilmember Perez second. Any objections?
It's not whispering over there.
Yeah. Hearing none. No. Okay, no objections, we're on to
Thank you.
Tap seven.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. This is a request for you to authorize us to submit to the state, under the Act of Transportation Program, a grant for seven and a half million dollars for the PE Trail. So you might recall recently, you had the presentation and adopted the feasibility study, that allows us now to submit for this application. The one ask we have is to, to apply with a ten percent local match, which would come from Measure I gas tax, not from the general fund, only because that gives us additional points and maybe better success at having an application approved with us providing that ten percent local match. If we were approved, we would bring that back and appropriate the funds at the time, at that time, but I'm excited and hopeful that we would see support and approval for this through the state for this important project. We just need the railroad to move the rail lines.
Move approval.
For approval, second.
I just have questions, did we get any letters of support for this, for this application?
We, we will do that as part of the application process.
Okay.
Yeah, and I did note that we're going to have it designed to the twelve foot width, because we heard that comment at the feasibility study, to have it instead of ten.
Twelve or fourteen.
Twelve or fourteen, yeah.
The width of the pathway? I think we should even hit as wide as we can get it.
I, I noticed there was like a mobile home park on the, on the way there, is it possible to kind of do like an entrance into something like that? Okay.
Anyway, all right, there's, was a motion and a second by, who moved on it?
I moved, Carisalas second.
Okay. Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Okay, thank you. Now we're on to tap number eight. And Mr. Brown, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. What we have before you is the approval of an agreement for the collective bargaining agreement, or MOU, for RMMA. To give you a quick breakdown of the differences, this is a two-year term, effective July first two thousand and twenty-one. Cost of living adjustment, five percent, July one, with the retroactive pay to July one two thousand and twenty-one. Cost of living adjustment, five percent, effective July first. Increasing the cafeteria benefit from thirteen hundred to fifteen fifty, and also revising a decrease from five days in bereavement to four days to get a holiday day back. The financial impact is approximately a hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and five dollars for the current fiscal year, and all appropriations will be made for the following years through the budget process. And that concludes the presentation. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer.
Anybody have questions?
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved by Mayor Pro Tem Scott, seconded by Councilmember Traheal. Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. And you have the next half item, number.
Yes, ma'am, and you switch faster than my iPad can. Similar to the last one, this is a MOU, or Collective Bargaining Agreement, with RCEA General Unit. The article will be, sorry, term of agreement will be term of two years, effective July first two thousand and twenty-one. This will also be a cost of living adjustment of five percent as of July first two thousand and twenty-one, with retroactive pay to July first. Cost of living adjustment, five percent, of July first two thousand and twenty-two, and an increase in the cafeteria benefit plan from thirteen hundred to fifteen fifty. There are no additional items, if I can get my iPad to respond. I take that back, this one was adding the Thanksgiving holiday, which was clarifying the direction the council had given in the past. All other terms and conditions in MOU remain unchanged. The financial impact of this is two hundred and fifty thousand, six fifty-eight for the current fiscal year, also in the next budget year, that will be appropriated by council. And that concludes my report on this one, if there are any questions.
Move approval, second.
It's been moved by Mayor Pro Tem Scott, seconded by, I think, Councilmember Carisalas over there.
Five.
Okay, any objections? Hearing none, the motion carries, thank you. And now you're on to tap ten.
Yes, ma'am. As part of the separate action, city council considered approving the memorandum of understanding, obviously with RCEA, we just did that, RMMA. The labor negotiations continue with the others. Unrepresented management, executive management classifications, positions, and part-time classifications are governed by a resolution adopted by council. This action would do the, mirror the five percent and raise that both retroactive and five percent moving forward. It also makes some modifications to the executive management benefits profile, providing a eleven hundred dollar per month cash and lieu benefit for those that will opt out of the medical insurance, as well as five hundred dollar per month auto allowance and lieu. It will, on the unrepresented management employees' benefit, it will mirror that five percent, but also raise from thirteen hundred to fifteen fifty, the cafeteria, similar to the represented staff. Part-time represented staff would have a cost of living adjustment of five percent effective May twenty-second, and then another cost of living effective July first. Additionally, the city manager's office is requesting the creation of an additional deputy city manager position, which will directly support the city manager and better meet the needs of city council, city staff, and our residents, also recommending the unfunding of the Director of Community Development position. We're also requesting the creation of the Engineering Services Department, and appropriately the Directory of Engineering Services and City Engineer, as well as adopting a budget resolution that will address the difference here. We have the cost, including all rollups, for the net new costs at one hundred and thirty-four thousand. We also have a review of the RMMA and RCEA collab. The city anticipates additional sales tax revenue above prior estimates identified in the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two, is recommending the city council increase the budget revenues for sales tax by five hundred and sixteen thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars, at this time to offset the proposed personnel salary and benefit increases. And that concludes my presentation, if you have any questions.
I do have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
Just clarification, under the unrepresented management employee benefit profile, so if they are using a cafeteria benefit plan, they actually, it has been increased to fifteen fifty for
Yes, ma'am.
Beneficial, for medical benefits, okay. Okay, Mayor Pro Tem.
When, when is the approval for the additional four commercial enforcement police officers coming to the city council?
Oh, that is part of the new budget, sir.
So that'll be in the budget pack?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Move approval.
Second.
Okay, the move, Mayor Pro Tem, and I think seconded by Councilmember Perez. Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Now we're into tap eleven. Okay.
I thought you were leaving.
I was trying to, your back is killing me, but I. So is him, him.
So I'm, I'm happy to have our new Director of Finance, Catherine Stevens, provide a presentation on our total budget, which includes the general fund that you had the presentation last time, as well as our other funds. At the end of the presentation, we'll pause on the slide about the RUA, because the RUA is really the bulk of our other funds. We have Peter Lucetti here and Tom Crowley, if you have any questions about the RUA budget. But with that, I, I will turn it over to Ms. Stevens for her presentation.
Okay.
So, Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and council members, we're here to request city council to approve, oh, sorry, we're here to request city council to receive a presentation on the draft fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three budget, provide direction to staff as appropriate, and schedule a public hearing for May twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-two, to consider adoption of the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three budget. So just to go over kind of what we went over last council meeting, was the general fund revenues, just a quick review in comparison from the revised budget of twenty-one, twenty-two to the projected budget for twenty-two, twenty-three. There are three areas that are showing a high difference. Of course, one is our sales tax increase from budgeted, we have a five point eight million increase that we're expecting for the projected budget for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. The transfer ends for general fund are showing a decrease of around five million, and other revenues are decreasing at about five million. I have here the decrease in the transfer ends is the decrease of the one-time four million dollar ARPA transfer that we put into the general fund for twenty-one, twenty-two, and a one million dollar gas tax transfer that we're not going to continue for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. In twenty-two, twenty-three, we're going to keep all the gas tax revenue in the gas tax fund, and appropriate expenses out of the gas tax fund as appropriate. Next is a quick overview of the general fund expenditures. We, just going over the review, our personnel increase, there is an increase in the general fund for personnel of close to sixteen point three million, or a little over sixteen point three million. That is also attributed to the closing of three of our internal service funds, so we are now absorbing building, maintenance, fleet, and information technology into the general fund. We also are adding the four new police officers for the Police Traffic Division, and there's a forecast of leave cash outs that have been added since the last time we spoke. And oh, next, our other expense decreases, let's go there. For our other expense decreases, we had a one-time transfer of ten million for OPEP that will not be in twenty-two, twenty-three, in this projected budget. The general liability was a one-time of six million, and workers' comp was a one-time of two point seven million, and those right now are not projected in the twenty-two, twenty-three budget. The non-operating expenditure decrease is due to capital expenditures. So the forecasts, or all the capital expenditures that have been added through council action for the one-time in twenty-one, twenty-two are not projected in twenty-two, twenty-three. And the general fund, two additional items were added from our last overview of the budget, projected budget, and that was the city council conferences and meetings. So we did receive an updated list, and that amount has been updated to three hundred and thirty-seven thousand. And those conferences and meetings are in attachment one, which are attached to the staff report. We also added the two leased police vehicles and capital expenditures for sixteen thousand. Just a quick overview of the requested positions for the general fund. So for the Community Development Department, we had a Development Service Specialist, one FTE Office Specialist, one FTE Permit Technician for Engineering, Senior Plans Examiner for Building. The Community Service Department requested three Facility Maintenance Assistants. The Fire Department, Emergency Medical Service Specialist, that was a reclass, Senior Admin Analyst, which was a reclass of another position, Administrative Assistant, and Accounting Technician. The IT Department was requesting an IT Supervisor, that was also a reclass. The Maintenance and Facilities Department were requesting one Equipment Mechanic, two Facilities Maintenance Technicians, and six Field Service Workers. And the Police Department, we have one Property and Evidence Technician, one Crime Analyst Assistant, one Police Corporal, one Police Sergeant, and four Police Officers for the Traffic Division. So just a brief overview of the updates for personnel in the general fund from our last discussion of the budget, where four new police officers were added to the Police Traffic Division. The reclassification of a City Engineer to Director of Engineering, um, excuse me, to the title Director of Engineering, City Engineer, is part of the Executive Management Unit. We did update part-time maximum, maximum hours for specific We did update part-time maximum, maximum hours for specific job titles to 1,500 hours. And we did forecast leave cash outs. And we did add some cost of living adjustments, increases to the budget. Oh, and the workers' comp. The workers' comp was decreased to 4.8 million. We actually forecasted taking care of the deficit in the workers' comp account over five years instead of trying to knock out that deficit in one year. So just to go over quickly all of the funds for fiscal year '22-'23, for the revenue. And looking at the slide, our total revenues for fiscal year '22-'23 is 234 million. And the special revenues have a decrease of around 42 million. The debt service funds have a decrease of 10 million. And this is from the revised '21-'22 budget to the projected budget for '22-'23. And the cost allocation has a decrease of around 5 million. So I detailed in the staff report the special revenue decreases were due to grant funding. So throughout the fiscal year, different departments bring to council grants for approval, and those have revised the '21-'22 budget. The debt service funds decrease in '21-'22. We, we financed brought to council for OPEB, to fund the OPEB, and that was the $10 million. Currently, that's not projected in '22-'23. The cost allocation decrease, again, the same from the general fund, is the 4 million for ARPA and the 1 million gas tax transfer that's not going to continue into '22-'23. Now looking at the expenses for the all funds. I have the total city expenses at, for the projected budget, at 220 million, just about, 220.7 million. And there is an increase in personnel of 12.4 million, capital decrease of 1, 156.1 million, and transfer decrease of 69.4 million. I did a quick slide on the special revenue funds. You do have this in your staff report. I tried to get them all on there. So the.
Don't you wear glasses too?
Yes, I do. That's why I'm looking here at this screen. I'll do better next time. I'll make it bigger for you. The special revenue, projected, for the special revenue funds, the projected revenue is 24 million for fiscal year '22-'23, and we have projected expenses so far of 15.2 million. Of course, these special revenue funds throughout the fiscal year do grow with grant proposals that are brought to council. So next, I wanted to just do a quick overview on the GAN limit. And our GAN limit for fiscal year '22-'23. So just to go over some quick highlights, what is the GAN limit? The GAN limit creates a restriction on the amount of government revenue that can be appropriated in any fiscal year. It applies only to those revenues defined as proceeds of taxes. It allows exclusions of voter-approved debt, qualified capital outlay, and cost of complying with court orders and federal mandates. And during any fiscal year, a government entity may not appropriate any proceeds of taxes received in excess of the appropriations limit of the entity. I did have to do work on the GAN limit for fiscal year '22-'23. We received a lot of sales tax, and our budget for sales tax has gone up. But I was able to read the California constitution and go through our GAN limit and make sure that we were compliant as well as stay under our GAN limit. So some changes that were done this year, as I did review the last, from 2020, excuse me, from 2000 to current. I did review every year, and I checked every ratio that the city used from 2000. And I did find about three or four years where we did not use the most advantageous ratio. So I did make an adjustment for that. So when we do come back to council for May 26th, there will be a resolution to approve the adjustment for our appropriation prior to 2002-23 so that we can roll over the corrected appropriation for 2022 to 2023. The other thing that I found is that with the city of Rialto, historically, we have not used capital projects as exclusions because we've never been close to our GAN limit. That is allowed. So for this year in '22-'23, I do include capital project exclusions. That is any capital project that's over $100,000 and has a lifetime over 10 years. You're allowed to exclude that out of your number. Um, let's see. So let's go through the calculation here very quickly. Let me go back. So to start, we take our appropriation from '21-'22. We use the factors that are provided by the Department of Cali, Department of Finance for the state of California. And we are either allowed to pick the growth factor from San Bernardino County or for our city. So for '22-'23, the growth factor that was most advantageous for the city was for the county. The city had a negative growth rate in Rialto. It was a negative 0.09. So I did use the county. And you apply that rate towards the state per capita income rate, which is fixed. They provide that number every year. From there, you get our GAN limit. So our GAN limit, which restricts our appropriations for proceeds of taxes for fiscal year '22-'23, is the 97,399,292. From there, you allocate revenues. So we go through our governmental funds, and we take out the revenues that are considered taxes, and we identify the revenues that aren't. And so that's done here at the bottom, and this is based off of budgeted figures for fiscal year '22-'23. The next step that we go through is we take all of our budget appropriations that would apply towards tax money. So anything that we would spend that tax money on in our governmental funds is where those budget appropriations come from, and that's that 136 million. From there, we take out all of those expenses that are not going to apply towards tax money. And for us, that would be our community development. You know, the, the charges for services we take over the counter, that has nothing to do with tax money. So we can exclude those items. On our rec, our community services, where patrons pay for their classes and their services, we can exclude those monies as well, and that's the 33.2 million. And we also can exclude our appropriations for debt service. And then I also excluded the eligible capital asset exclusions. So again, those are capital asset projects over 100,000 with a useful life of over 10 years. Our budget appropriations from proceeds of taxes with this formula is 97, With that, we are under our GAN limit. We are slightly under our GAN limit. So we only have, based on this, 158,049 to spend from proceeds of taxes in reference to appropriations. So if we go over that, technically, it's, it's not allowed. That's where we have to stay. So next, I just want to quickly, here's my slide for Rialto Utility Authority with their financials. And Tom is going to come up and, and speak about RUA.
Thank you, Catherine. Before you today is, or this evening, is the proposed budget for the Rialto Utility Authority, which includes the concession agreement activities for Rialto Water Services. The Rialto Utility Authority budget is broken down into three accounts. Sewer, water and utility, that is identified as 660, 670 and 680. So the 660 sewer fund, the proposed sewer fund budget for this year is 29.8 million as compared to last year's budget of 31.4 million. The budget has two main components, the debt service and, of 12.6 million, and services and supplies at 17.1 million. Included in the services and supplies is a depreciation amount of 2.3 million. The remaining 14.8 million includes utilities such as gas and electricity, the service fee for Rialto Water Services, that's their labor, fix, chemical and repair and replacements, the ORNR program, insurance, independent engineer, consulting services, permits and contract payments to the city. For the sewer fund, revenues are projected to be more than expenditures, and will generate some additional funds for future capital projects. So we believe that the sewer fund is in pretty good shape. Now moving on to the 670 water fund. The proposed water budget for this year is 17.9 million as compared to last year's budget of 17.5. Similar to the sewer fund budget, the water budget has two main components, the debt and the services as supply. In this particular case, the depreciation, well, the debt service is 2.9 million, and the services supply is 15 million. So of the services and supplies, .9 million is for depreciation, and the remaining 14.1 includes, similar to the sewer, sewer fund, the utilities, services for Rialto Water Services, the ORNR program, the insurance, independent engineer, consulting services. In addition, we have water purchases for groundwater recharge, permits, contract payments to the city. Now the water fund revenues are projected to be less than the expenditures, and we will be subsidizing with the ARPA funds to help, help in some rate stabilization. A big reason for the revenue is not staying pace with the expenditures is due to conservation and the increase in costs. Moving on to our 680 utility management fund. The budget for this year is 1.5 million as compared to last year's budget of 1.6. The budget includes legal services, personnel costs for three city employees, and other services and supplies that are related to managing Rialto Utility Authority. In conclusion, the total proposed RUA budget for fiscal year '23 is 49.2 million as compared to last year's budget of 50.5. Now this budget does not include any capital projects because what we do is we bring those forward as they are developed, also with a funding identified for that project. So they will come as the projects start to develop. With that, that includes my presentation.
So next steps for us will be.
Couple of questions of him.
Yeah.
Yes.
Why, why such a difference in budget and actual between capital and debt service?
In which, which one?
660.
The 660?
Yeah.
Between capital and debt service?
Actually, in service and supplies.
You know, it may have been a, a way that they were categorized for those different accounts. We're trying to normalize from year to year.
Who prepared this budget?
I, I prepared the, the 2023 and the 2022 budgets, yes.
Well, there's some huge differences between what you budgeted and what the actual was.
For 2022?
I, I, yeah.
Well, I think Catherine can help.
If you look at the grand total, it's, it's F.
Correct.
So the, the actuals that are, that are shown there are done through a journal entry on the accounting side. And it's about a month lag because the entry happens after the end of the month, and then they are posted, and that's how they show up there. So the actuals you're looking at are probably a month delayed because the entries happen after the month end. Those items aren't entered into the system through actual keying or through someone using the system. It's a journal entry. We get the journal entry over from RUA, and it's processed on our side by the accountants.
So do you, do you anticipate the actual number by the time it, we get to the end of the year, coming up to the 50 million?
Correct. Our year stays open until August 30th. So this fiscal year stays open.
So this actual number is really only year-to-date?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, all right, that answers my question.
So the next steps for us is the public hearing, and hopefully leading to a budget adoption on May 26th. I guess at this point, we're opening the floor for any suggestions.
Madam Mayor, I would move approval to receive and file this and to set a public hearing for May 26, 2022.
Okay, and it's been seconded by Councilmember Karazellis. Any other comments or?
Really nice report.
Thank you. Thank you.
A little more comprehensive than the ones we've seen in the past.
Thank you.
Not a little, a lot more.
But, well, Councilmember Trahio has a question, and I just want to take and compliment. But we'll wait, by the time we get for the public hearing and, and adoption, I think there'll be some other questions, but I also want to commend you on it. And I'm just fascinated that you found ledgers that went all the way back to 2000. Can't believe it. Go ahead, Councilmember.
No, no, I just wanted to see, because I'm looking through, I see OPEB kind of mentioned on here. And I know I've been having conversations with the city manager about UAL and possibly putting money into that account.
And, and what we will do is as we close out the current fiscal year, and we have that report around November, maybe?
Correct.
That's well, where you'll have the options to consider putting to pre-fund pension or OPEB or capital projects, whatever the council's desire is with those excess revenues.
All the money you've hidden for the year?
There's no hidden money.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there any objections to the motion? None. The motion carries, I guess. Prepare for the public hearing. Okay, that concludes it, all the business. And in the interest of time, I will ask, is there any reports that people feel they would love to provide?
I have one.
Do you have a question or comment?
I have a question. Mr. Bell, is, is it permissible during public oral communications to ask a speaker where they live?
You can certainly ask. They don't have to respond.
Well, then if I, but then if I knew where they lived, I could say where they lived.
Yes.
Okay.
They certainly could.
I think it's time that we started telling people where some people live and where they don't live.
It's quite common.
I found it very offensive tonight that somebody wanted to point the finger at my son, who's already deceased, and he wasn't killed by a police officer, but he was certainly killed by a greedy businessperson in Fontana that didn't give a crap whether he was alive or dead. So, you know, maybe it's time to start speaking up. Thank you.
I, I just wanted to, I had the opportunity to, along with Councilwoman.
I, I just wanted to, um, yeah, I had the opportunity to, along with, uh, Councilwoman Perez, to attend the awards ceremony with the Rialto Police Department. And, uh, it was refreshing to hear a lot of the good work that they're, they're doing. Uh, everything, you know, being able to find missing persons, uh, to be able to recover property. Uh, just a range of all, of all the great things that they do for our community to keep us safe. And, you know, I, I get that we have people here who are kind of being big critics of, of our police department, but they're doing amazing work, um, in our community. And, um, being at the awards, uh, presentation, you can actually see kind of how hard they work and what they're able to accomplish, uh, in our city. So I, I want to commend all the officers, uh, that were presented that night. It, you know, it's dangerous work, you know, I, um, and it's also work where, uh, you don't, you don't really get to see that side of, of view in public. And so, um, I wish there were better, more opportunities to kind of shine a light on some of the great things that the police department is doing in the public eye. Thank you.
Councilmember Karazellis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just, uh, want to wish all the mothers out there Happy Mother's Day. And for all the Latin American, uh, mothers out there, Feliz Dia de las Madres, y muy especial a la mía, a mi suegra, y a todas las madres que están aquí hoy, a Carla y a nuestra alcalde, que también es madre, y les quiero desear Feliz Dia a las madres a todas, las madrecitas hoy. Muchas gracias. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Perez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, yes, and in regards to what Councilmember Trahio, um, mentioned, uh, it was a really nice ceremony to attend, uh, with the police department. And, you know, a lot of their success stories, um, are not highlighted. And, you know, it was great to hear all the hard work and everything, um, that they're out doing on the, out in the community, day in and day out, um, which, you know, unless you're there or you're, you're hearing it firsthand, we're not aware of all the hard work that they do every day in, you know, recovering missing persons. And, you know, um, uh, uh, there, there's a wide range of things that go on on a daily basis that we're not aware of. Um, and also, I had an opportunity on April thirtieth, um, on the celebration of Earth Day. I attended that. That was a great event. Um, I, you know, I know that some folks were not, uh, so thrilled that the, the turnout wasn't as it's been in past years. But, you know, but just now getting back out into the community and getting, uh, the events going again, um, it was still nice to see some people out there working hard. I know that, uh, we're out there shoveling, raking, and planting trees in the heat, but it was a beautiful day to be out, and it was nice to be out there with the community. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Mayor Proctim, did you have anything else you wanted to add to your comment?
Anything?
Or your question?
Absolutely not.
Oh, okay. Well, I wanted quickly, I have in front of us what's happening, and I thought in the interest of time, I'll let, no, you come on up. You can cover it. Because it was provided, and so go right ahead.
Okay. Uh, Gabe, you got my slide? Thank you. Ooh, okay. Uh, Wednesday, tomorrow, uh, May eleventh, we have our Mardi Gras senior prom at the Grace Vargas Senior Center. Tickets are sold out. Um, it will be from three to seven. And then Saturday, May fourteenth, uh, we will be having a park cleanup at Jerry Eves Park from eight AM to twelve PM. Uh, May twentieth and twenty-first is Run What You Brung. Friday night's cruise will be on Foothill, and it starts at five. Um, Saturday, uh, Rain or Shine will be on Riverside, seven AM to three PM. Uh, we will be noticing the businesses, uh, with staff first, and then, uh, the Rotary Club will also follow up. And we'll just make sure that there's increased signage so that, um, the community is aware that they can still reach those businesses, uh, via a different route versus on Foothill. And then on Monday, May thirtieth, is our Memorial Day tribute at the Rialto Park Cemetery from ten AM to one PM.
Well, thank you.
Madam Mayor, I, I think we should go back to the tradition that this city has always had. The younger council members, males, go to the senior prom and dance with the senior citizens that are there. I did it, I did it for many years, so I encourage you two to go to the prom tomorrow night.
Join me, and we'll be there.
I can't dance anymore.
Well, you don't need to dance. You could just, uh, sit around and drink some of the punch. Drink the Kool-Aid.
Well, one I had, had announced I was gonna go to the prom, but unfortunately, I will not be able to. We'll be on a flight tomorrow to Sacramento. So there's an opening. You can go, okay? Uh, and the other thing I just want to say, uh, the chief has provided some information. For me, I just feel like, you know, people speak to you in or- oral communication. They constantly want you to respond back. You try to be very mindful of what commu- oral communication is. But I continue to express, um, my concerns about safety in this, in, in, in our meetings and the very, um, while I can appreciate the presence, uh, I'm very concerned with the way we are operating in here. And when people are, you know, very, regardless, they feel like they want to hear answers to something that we all know is not a process that we could just arbitrarily speak to on social media or in a public setting. So, uh, you know, I try to be mindful of people, let them have a say-whatever, and recognize that we have people sometimes needing to have interpreters. But, uh, that was, we could give five minutes, and that's quite amount of time for you to express yourself. Other cities now are down to three minutes. And then to have people still feel that they demand some answers or that a couple of incidents that we're not looking at them, I just don't know what to say with it. But I, I really do try to respect and give people enough time beyond five minutes. But if this is gonna continue to go on, then we're going to have to really decide how do we address this one situation? Because it's been very clear that they're beyond having anything to express. They just want to disrupt. So I will hope that when we leave here, we start talking about, what I keep talking about is the security and surveillance of what goes on around in this, this area. Because we do not have any real surveillance around here. And when we leave out of here, everybody goes in all different directions. And that really concerns me, if people are taking the time to bring a whole bunch of other people in here to express, I didn't even know what this last situation that they were talking about. And it's just beginning to constantly try and keep something negative going on in our community when we know good and well that our police department is doing everything they can to be out there twenty-four, seven. And I know, because I run into them, and they run into me in all places, and they're doing the best they can. So, um, I think that enclosed session kind of just set me off. And I don't know what we're gonna do, but I think we, you know, we keep talking about mental health, and this is the Mental Health Month, and we really are gonna need to do something more than just sit here and, and let the public thrash out to us when they know exactly there's a lot of other issues that pertain to this situation. So with that, anybody have anything else to say? If not, I'm gonna ask for adjournment. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.